So I'm not sure if that's available to the public.
It is. It's part of the staff package, Commissioner Fall.
That's okay. Excuse me, Miss. There were only a few done. We can put up a electronic link. We have a flash drive of that if you would like. Perhaps we only printed a limited number of pages due to the time constraints this afternoon. And the question I had related to that was one of the criteria is 50 feet within a highway that's been designated a scenic highway by the Board of Supervisors. And I would appreciate finding out which highways have been so designated. So we know which areas are affected. Is it 299, all of 299? Or is it Highway three, you know, the Trinity Scenic Byway, the Trinity Heritage Scenic Byway? Which ones of those might qualify? Zero? Okay. Well, I would appreciate the information from staff. Thank you.
Yeah, I requested that RCD and they do mapping and they said that there is, there is none that there's, there's two proposed, but there are actually no scenic byways. County registered scenic byways in the county. Being reinforced would be very beneficial.
Yeah, because they've been designated by the Forest Service and by the National Highway Administration. You can look on their websites and see that they're scenic byways, but they may not be so designated by the Board of Supervisors. So I would appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
Would you mind bringing it a little closer?
I had a question on page three about the potential onsite consumption of cannabis and cannabis products. I'm just trying to figure out how that would work. So you can't.
We're still in attachment one, correct, in the ordinance?
Page three.
Yes, thank you.
So, so you can't smoke inside. So it would have to be outside, not visible from any public place. Or area restricted due to age. What is area restricted due to age?
That would be our youth oriented facilities, places where the youth congregates as stated in the definition.
Well, the state health and safety code says that you can't smoke cannabis within 1,000 feet of a school. For youth facility when kids are present. So they're going to have to be 1,000 feet away. The outdoor smoking area would have to be 1,000 feet away from the school, daycare or youth facility. So anyway, is that how that's going to work?
Yes, Commissioner. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On page four, do you have the cannabis storefront retail operating standard? It's under item 12. I was looking for that.
Sorry, just making sure I make notes. Commissioner Fall, at this point in time, we are working through the retail operating standards. It's not a standard document that this county has at this point in time. It is a requirement for the Department of Cannabis Controls. It is the retailer's standard operating procedures on how they'll run and operate their business. So we can either adopt, you know, kind of tier off of what the state has already put out for guidance and then make that into our own. But that's something that I'm currently developing alongside the application process.
Okay. On, on page five. The denial or rescission of license. When I read the potential reasons for not, say, renewing a license. I didn't see anything about repeated violations. Or am I misreading that? I mean, if somebody consistently sells to kids under 18 or something. I mean, is there a criteria I'm missing as far as denying the renewal of a license? Some sort of repeated violations?
Commissioner Fall.
Please hold your questions and your comments until it's time for the community. Thank you.
Commissioner Fall, Director Connell through the chair. The denial and rescension of license is actually consistent throughout all of 17.43. It is the same for each license type, whether that be cultivation, nursery, distribution, manufacturing. We've, we've used the same criteria for, for denials throughout the entire ordinance. So there's nothing added into this. However, though, if you were in violation of state and local laws, that would be grounds for, for denial and the inability to renew. I don't believe that at this point in time, we actually track violations that way as far as keeping them in, in compliance. I think that that is part of something that we're continuing to develop to strengthen this ordinance.
Because I just, I know we've discussed this under the cultivation. When do you not renew a license? And, okay, so. There's, there's a section on page, sorry, I missed it on page four. The zoning overlay of special treatment. Are those special treatment areas analogous to the historic districts in Weaverville and Lewiston?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was my technical questions.
Is there any other questions? Todd, did you have any questions?
No, good Bill. Thank you.
Duncan?
Yeah, so for clarity, the historic Weaverville as well as Lewiston, in order to have, obtain a license, it would need a director's use permit? That's as of the regulations.
I believe that is stated differently in the zoning ordinance. What the requirement is, is to apply for review with the Historic Preservation Commission for the area in question.
And so he would not, once they have, just like any other adjustments to buildings in the historic district.
That's correct. It would be the same regulation as currently stated in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
I had a few questions. On page two, where it says general plan consistency. It says the plan, it's a general plan designation. It refers to this being in. Basically with our general plan that was written 50 years ago.
Well, the, the intent of that is because we're looking at this as a retail use and our general plan does discuss retail uses. So in that regard, because the C1, C2 and HC are districts that allow retail uses, which is the point that we're getting to. Is a consistency with the retail use. That is why it would be consistent with the general plan. Even though we all know that our general plan is outdated, it's the intent of the type of use that we're talking about.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. On page two, where it says youth-oriented facilities, you list a few things like public park and those areas, but I don't notice, you know, anything like a bowling alley, ice cream shop. And I'm kind of just speaking of our, you know, our community, where kids do congregate now traditionally and currently. You know, those are all areas, and why aren't those areas identified as areas that where you wouldn't want this? If you know kids congregate there.
So Chair Sharp, Director Connell. As it reads, youth-oriented facility means public park and any establishment that advertises in a manner that identifies the establishment as catering to or providing services primarily intended for minors. So I think that that's our net capture, of whether that's the ice cream shop, the bowling alley, places that we know children, youth oriented will be at and frequent, that's, that's where that capture is. But to list through each possible could omit something that we don't intend to omit. So by doing it in a broader scope capture, it allows us to really capture the entire intent.
Thanks for that.
So for clarity, that would be 1,000 feet from any of these youth facilities? Is the recommendations?
There's nothing in there, but.
There's nothing.
That's from the, that's, that's from the state, that's the state regulations, that it's 1,000 feet?
That's what I saw.
Well, no, the state regulation is 600 feet, but it's 1,000 feet for smoking and 1,000 feet for advertising or marketing.
So if it's non-smoking, then it's 600 feet.
Unless they're advertising.
Right, if, if the onsite consumption does not involve smoking, because the smoking has to be out of doors, then the regulation, the health and safety code about you can't be smoking within 1,000 feet of kids wouldn't apply. Sorry, I'm not an attorney, I'm just.
So on page, well, I don't know what page this is, page three. For the application process, I noticed that there's nothing in there that refers to like a felony background check or, you know, criminal background check. Is that part of the application process?
Chair Sharp, Director Connell. As part of the state review process, we don't have that net capture here. I believe that that would do undue burden to the sheriff's office, as they are the only legal entity to get background checks. And so we net capture that by requiring that whoever applies for retail license locally must also qualify and maintain a state license. And that state license is where they do that felony background check. And so it is not in our local code, but it is the requirement that you maintain that state license, which would clear them of any background.
So that is in the state license verbiage?
Correct.
Page four. Application requirements, planning director or his or her designated cannabis storefront. Application is form related to administrative policy. I think you asked that, didn't you? What, what is the administrative policy?
Chair Sharp, Director Connell. That is what we are actually building out. So the policy will go in conjunction with the application, which you don't have before you, because we have not quite finalized it through our staff and through legal. But the goal is, is that we have all of that net capture at the application, and it's in the application, just like in our cultivation, nursery, all of the other applications.
Okay. Same page, page four, item 12. A copy of Cannabis Storefront Retail Operating Standards containing a statement dated signed for business owner. Who creates that standard?
Chair Sharp, Director Connell. Again, we, we talked about this with Commissioner Paul.
That was the one she asked, okay.
And that is something that is provided at the DCC that we're, that I, my staff is currently analyzing so that we can decide if we want to make it a Trinity County operation as well. But it is part of the standing operating procedures for every retail license at the state.
Thank you.
That's why I couldn't find it.
On page five, section 17.43H dash, or point 080, inspection and enforcement. Who determine the hours in, and if law enforcement, does law enforcement actually have hours that they could inspect? I mean.
Chair Sharp, Director Connell. So what we're talking about is the standing business hours for the retail ordinance, which I'm.
This is for enforcement.
Correct, but it's during the retail business hours for the operation of the retail license. So we wouldn't be there at midnight to go and inspect their premises, whether that's law enforcement, myself, or one of my staff. It would be during the normal business hours operation, which I believe is from 0, 06:00 AM to 10:00 PM at state, state level. And I believe that we're looking to adopt that same thing here. So between the hours of 6:00 and 10:00, they should be open and ready for an inspection, whether that be by my staff, the actual planning director, or law enforcement.
Okay, thank you for that. Page, well, both pages five and six refer to fees for annual licenses. Who determines those fees, and were those fees established and how?
Chair Sharp, Director Connell. Those fees are established by the Board of Supervisors. We are required at the Cannabis Division to do a fee study. As it states right now, we have a general fee study, so we have generalized fees for applications. My goal is that by the end of this year, we will have a, a fully researched and developed fee study for cannabis program to cover the cost of administering this program.
What is that fee study based on?
Hours, personnel, inspections, all of the things that are listed here in the ordinance to operate the entire division of cannabis in this county.
Thank you. Okay, and one more, the hours of operation, how, okay, you spoke to that. So the hours of operation that you have on here is a state standard?
Chair Sharp, Director Connell. Yes, sir.
Okay, did, did, did you guys look at other hours of operations for other like industry models in other counties?
Chair Sharp, Director Connell. I did not, I, I did not do that research. I would just prefer to adopt that state mechanism so that we're consistent across the board. As far as adding additional restrictions, would, I just don't have time or staff to really dive into those levels. So for us, for, for consistency and for speed to get these ordinances up and approved, we've, we've really leaned heavily on what the state regulations are.
Thank you. That's all I had.
I just wanted to add one thing for the benefit of the legal counsel. So it's chapter 1741, which prohibits the establishment or operation of marijuana dispensaries. So I think that's a catch 22 glitch somehow that.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll look into it.
Go ahead, Commissioner McIntosh.
Is a school bus stop a, considered a youth-oriented facility?
It's called out separately, it's called out separately in the cultivation ordinance, and authorized bus stop is listed separately.
Yes, legally, it is not considered a youth-oriented facility. It is a separate designation, which does have additional restrictions from the state.
Thank you.
Hey, if there's no other questions for staff from the commission, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the community for comment. Each person is allowed three minutes per comment, and we'll start with people here, and then we'll move to Zoom.
Hello, thanks for your service. I'm very service-oriented in our community, and I just wanted to thank you for your service. I usually don't come.
Could you please identify yourself?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Sadie Fagan. I'm a local business owner. I have, I own J&amp;J Septic, and I also am a property manager, and I also take care of several elders, which is why I'm first, because I have to leave at seven to go put one of my clients to bed, which is why I'm also here, because I have to drive all the way to Redding to buy her cannabis cream to rub on her feet and her back. And it'd be so much easier if I could buy it locally. My theme of my outfit is everything I'm wearing is local. My shirt, pants, my shoes, my earrings. I support our community. I buy local, I shop at our stores. Every single time I am at a cannabis dispensary in Redding or Eureka, there are multiple Trinity County people there. Why? Why on earth are we sending our tax dollars there? When we have an industry here that we could support a dispensary? I just, I, to me, I, I don't come to these meetings, I'm really busy, but I felt compelled to come because it's a personal, it's personal for me. I take care of a lot of elderly, and it helps them a lot. Formal, former alcoholics, which by the way, they sell alcohol at the bowling alley. So I just, I wanted to come here and show my support.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the, the room here to just please hold your applause. Let's just keep it professional, keep the comments to the podium, please. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Well, I'd like to keep our tax dollars in Trinity County, and I, and I'm pretty sure everyone in this county wants, feels the same way. So that's why I'm here. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hello, I'm Norma Oldberry, and I live walking distance from where the dispensary is going to be. And I am 63 years old. I used to do methadone for pain, and I have not done methadone for five years. This is more nervous, nervous, whoa. I smoke weed. I go to the dispensary in Redding. I've gone, gone to a few dispensaries, and they're very efficient. And they sell things that you don't even have to smoke, which for me, sometimes is a, is a really good thing. You know, because smoking and wildfires. But Tammy came to my house five years ago, and I just had surgery on my foot, and she brought me medicine. I never met her in my life. I knew that she was from the Queen of Dragons, and I knew that she was reputable. I have seen her place grow immensely. There's cages upon cages. There's, there's so much protection. I've seen her go through several guards that she's had to pay for through the years that she's been trying to get this to happen in our county. And the tax money, it's unbelievable. What I see when I go to a dispensary, there's about 10 to 15 people. There's about 10 to 15 people working in the dispensary. And they are medically equipped to answer any question that you have. I have gotten some stickums that you stick to your back, because that's where a lot of my pain in it, pain is. And I just cut it in half. They said you can cut it in half. They're very wise. It's amazing. And then the people that go in there, my age and older. And it's miracle, but it's done for me. My kids love me again. I'm not doing methadone, which I think is kind of like heroin, right?
Yep.
There it is there. Peace and love.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks for your service. We appreciate it, and I appreciate you listening to my sales pitch here on why we should.
Please state your names.
Would you identify yourself, please?
My name is Will Shaw, and I have been a resident of Junction City for over 20 years. Previously, I owned property and poker bar for over 10 years. I've been the North Fort Grange Master for 15 years. I am currently the Deputy California State Grange Master, so I have some history here. I have been a cannabis user since 1966. I'm probably the oldest person in this room that has used cannabis. I have a lot of experience, and I have found no personal reason for you not providing secure, affordable, safe place for everyone to buy cannabis to treat their medical conditions or their personal recreation needs. In 1995, as a firefighter, was severely injured. And in 1996, luckily, a cannabis was one of the recommendations that I was given after I was sent to a pain clinic. I received medication, cannabis for PTSD and pain. It significantly reduced and overcame my medical need for narcotics. I stopped use of narcotics. That's important for you to understand. I have continued use. As a California Deputy State Grange Master, I lead one, or 5,000, over 5,000 members who have chosen to promote the normalization of cannabis. We support dispensaries being allowed everywhere a legal business is allowed. Cannabis is legal. The federal government is taking steps to make this product legal throughout the United States. This allows open marketing of cannabis and allows for local and state to collect taxes. So let's talk taxes. Bottom line, California in 2020 made $85 million in cannabis taxes from dispensaries. Look it up, fact. 48 cities benefit from dispensary taxes in California. Shasta County last year made $2.5 million in dispensary taxes. I have been to many dispensaries throughout California and other states as well. They are secure, safe, and well-maintained. Everyone has clean, accessible access to these, and your identity is checked. No minors are allowed in.
Your three minutes is up, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Will.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, commissioners, directors, other noteworthy individuals. I'm Chad Smith, resident of Junction City. You know, this is a complex subject. Leaders, be them appointed or elected, and other officials generally don't have job descriptions that include words like trailblazer, risk manager. Those positions are usually filled by staff and, you know, other individuals. They do however, have an obligation to steer their respective ships in a direction representative of not only their constituents, but their community as a whole. This county and its leaders have an opportunity to provide an avenue to legal enterprise, to not only increase access to goods and services desired by its residents, but to further insulate its citizens against having to deal with the legacy untested and unregulated cannabis, you know, avenues that exist right now. By adopting in and favoring, excuse me, forwarding a favorable recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, we can help to insulate our residents from having to participate in these legacy markets. We can help to provide tested and, and safe products to individuals. And I feel like it would be a disservice to this community to continue letting what has become a norm statewide find a home here in Trinity County. And I urge you to forward a favorable recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Susan Bryant. I'm a real estate broker in this county, Shasta County and Tohima County for 45 years. I've been a broker here. This young man saying to keep bucking the trend is so right, that Trinity shouldn't be the last. This young man saying to keep bucking the trend is so right that Trinity shouldn't be the last one on board. Safe, tested cannabis is so important. As a cannabis user who saved her life, I was a stage four cancer before I even had a symptom. I've gone to UCSF. They saved my life. And they told me that cannabis was going to keep me alive. And I am five years clean of any cancer after being on my deathbed. Stage four is pretty hard to beat and I attribute that to cannabis. And I also want to mention that as a caregiver for my mother in her eighties, who had a massive stroke, cannabis kept her from seizing on a daily basis. A simple tincture under her tongue kept it there. And the seizures almost killed her after her stroke. But we were able to keep her seizure free for four years after her stroke until her death at eighty-four years old. To be able to stop your parent or grandparent from seizing almost instantaneously is something you cannot put a price on. My family has a aircraft carrier named after them because we are quite a military family. One of our cousins was an Admiral, Admiral Zumalt. He ran the Navy for a good forty-five years. It's just time. Trinity County's majority of the residents here want dispensaries. They want this legalized. They want the tax dollars. Redding is killing it right now because like they say, everybody here drives there. It's a waste of gas and precious resources to keep people in Trinity County under the thumb of oppression. It has so many medical uses that as Americans, we have the right to it. And I understand people don't like it. But it's so important in the geriatric community to have access. Older people won't go on the street. And Trinity County is pretty much the biggest black market that's left in this California state. I personally have had to go and spend hundreds of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
For pot, for a patient that had mold. And that's not right. We, we shouldn't have access to something tested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jordan Casper. I'm a longtime community member, resident of Trinity County, father and business owner here. As a father, I feel it's safer to have regulated retail marketplace for cannabis in Trinity County. This would reduce the black market that feeds the streets, giving minors greater access. Some people say right now that minors have access to cannabis and that is true. We do not have a retail cannabis here in Trinity County. The storefront can be cleaned, nice and appropriate security in place. They ID everyone at the door regardless of how old you look. I would say that the proper retail cannabis are safer for our kids. I encourage some of you who have never been to one to go check out some legal shops so you can see for yourself how nice these places are, professional and accessible for all adults. I currently have to drive to Redding to shop for cannabis, taking my money and it's not cheap out of the county. I want to shop local, hopefully in Trinity County. And also what about the medical patients who need safe and, safe and plausible access to medicine? Or people on a fixed income who cannot make it to Redding? They're the ones really missing out. As a business owner, we serve everyone, including the cannabis community in Trinity County. About a quarter of our yearly business is from local farmers. We had retail cannabis in Trinity County. We anticipate our sales going up through cannabis tourism and increased jobs and economic growth here within the county. Right now, we have some pretty great people and members in the community that are involved in the cannabis industry. We do not want to lose, lose these people. These are the people supporting our local fundraisers. They have kids in schools. They play sports here. They're coaches and leaders. Just some of the best people. When cannabis industry crashes, which it is crashing, many of the before mentioned people above will leave. And that would be devastating for this county. Please don't let that happen. Please support retail cannabis in Trinity County.
Thank you for your comments.
Chris Williams, Weaverville. We need a storefront retail ordinance in our county. If for nothing else, economic growth, community pride and accessibility for those in need in our county. Because of the miracle properties of cannabis, I have a mom again, who for decades used prescription narcotics, prescribed here in Trinity County to ease her pain, rendering her unrecognizable. She was against cannabis use my entire childhood, most of my adulthood, until she tried it and it changed her life. She can't travel one hundred miles, round trip to Shasta County to dispensary. She needs it here. So many of us need it here. Additionally, planning commissioners must exercise their power in the public's, in public's interest as opposed to personal self-interest or other narrow private interest. Commissioner Sharp should recuse himself from participating in any further commercial cannabis discussions as presented to the commission due to his opening statements, which I think was supposed to be an apology, and furthering the dissemination of misinformation, which showcases his personal bias against our program. Not to mention Commissioner Sharp demonstrates time and time again, he's not done his homework on our cannabis program. Shame on you. Please move forward with building a solid storefront retail ordinance in Trinity County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. I'm gonna try and stick to some details and I want to tell you a little about my personal experiences. I do believe that the, the term dispensary is just, it no longer exists. It was stricken and it's been replaced by retail. Retail can include both adult and medical use on one license. One of the things why including the medical terminology in there is extremely important is because medical patients pay a reduced tax rate. So it actually continues to make the cannabis more affordable. Aside from, once we have them in Trinity County, not having to do a round trip to Weaverville, the time and the money. Many people in my community in Hayfork, that's an hour and a half. Many of our senior citizens are on our local Facebook page regularly asking if there's anybody going to Weaverville to go to the CVS so that they can get their meds. So any idea that, as one of the comment letters said, one dispensary or retail establishment in Trinity County is sufficient, that's utter nonsense. If you lived in, in Hayfork, you would not think one CVS in Trinity County is sufficient. That's an hour and a half round trip at the least. As far as the onsite consumption, there are very specific regulations from the state level for onsite consumptions. If somebody wants to have that, that element in their business, they'll have to comply with them. But due to the thousand-foot setback for smoking, so on and so forth, a retail establishment isn't required to have onsite consumption. So they could still be inside the normal six hundred-foot setback. I'd also like to articulate the fact that cigar type smoking clubs do exist. They're really typical and more like affluent, wealthy areas, often downtown San Francisco, those type of places. They're indoors and they have air filtration. And you have to be a member of a club to participate in there. In the, inside of that building, you can smoke cigars. You know, so that exists. A security person, as far as like gaining entrance to a dispensary or retail establishment, it's a, it's, a person must be stationed at the front door of a retail establishment during their entire hours of business operation. You cannot go inside until they have checked your ID, unlike a bar. You know, I grew up, my mom drank. I was in those bars when I was five years old. They never checked my ID. Let's see, where else? I would also like to see, and it's not articulated in the ordinance, but the opportunity for a variance from setbacks, if they extend beyond the state requirements. The, of course, we can't give a variance to a setback that's inside of the state requirements. Sensitive receptors are primarily, are the, the, does, the, the youth facilities are primarily designed for youth. It's not because they sell, you know, water balloons inside of a drugstore down the street. That's not the same thing. Background checks are done through the state, so that one's covered. Another reason why they not just have one, or even limit them at all, is what if there's one in Hayfork, one in Weaverville and these, you've said there's two.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Marie Peterson, District One. I also am a long-term resident of Trinity County and was actually born here in Weaverville. I've been a business owner for, ever since two thousand and sixteen and have employed between five and ten people at all times during that time due to the cannabis industry. It's just one business. So I just want to say, number one, marrying the state regulations is ideal. It, to make it more restrictive would be a disservice. The limited number of correctly zoned parcels that we have, C1, C2 and HC, in addition to the required setbacks, is restrictive enough. Number two, you cannot hold development in progress hostage on account of the general plan not being updated for the last thirty to forty years. Number three, we get that there's a very small local group of people that doesn't want cannabis in Lewiston. Most entrepreneurs do not want to invest their time and money in a community that doesn't have a booming economy where they will make profits. Lewiston doesn't fit the mold of where what somebody's gonna want to put a cannabis dispensary, unfortunately. People all over Trinity County and California are consuming cannabis anytime and anywhere that they want to. The only thing that would change with cannabis retail in Trinity is that they would be able to legally purchase, to purchase legal cannabis produced in a regulated way. Also, jobs and tax revenues will be generated. If you don't like crimes perpetrated by outlaws, then support law-abiding citizens and the white market. Number six, Trinity County is part of the Emerald Triangle and produces world famous, world-class cannabis. This is our namesake. Cannabis retail can help invigorate our tourism economy. It will help keep power, jobs and money in Trinity County. And lastly, it is literally un-American to limit or fight against legitimate businesses. America was built on capitalism and we really need to have a chance to compete. So I urge you to please, like, do not delay this any longer. We've been waiting for years. Just pass this through so the board can hear this in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Heidi Carpenter-Harris. More than a comment, I have a couple of questions. I'm, and I'm totally ignorant to this, so this is truly a question. I'm curious about the truth in labeling with the, in, in the retail sale of marijuana. I, one lady spoke about having, having to purchase things with mold. I've heard many stories of people buying product that was either, you know, tainted or had problems within it. So I know that I've, I've worked in agriculture for twenty years. I've had the opportunity to go through the process of, of federal labeling of food and agricultural products. And so my question is, does the state have a truth in labeling ordinance or guidance? And if so, will that be part of what our county does to make sure that what people are saying they're selling is what they're selling? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Henson and I have a cannabis dispensary over in Arcata, California, in Humboldt County. I jot down some notes on my way over, but your questions really have put all of my thoughts aside on this. I wanted to answer yours first. The terminology between adult use versus medical use. Right now in California, both are legal. And every county has the right to determine which ones they want to allow within their county. Right now Crescent City is not allowing for medicinal, only recreational, Eureka, all of that. You can have a recreational license. You can have both and decide not to do that. But why medicinal is so important? It's not about the eighteen-year-olds that come in to do, to use their medical license. What I see in my store for the last three years is that the people that are utilizing that are Bob who comes in every two weeks to get his one ounce of flour that he uses at night to go to sleep. That medical card saves him almost twenty dollars in sales tax and doesn't limit his purchase. He doesn't have to come back as often. Onsite consumption, I don't want that to scare you guys. What that really is about, it's not gonna be a smoke room. If you visit any, visit Pop and Barkley's up in Humboldt County. It is not about that. Right now I am, my hands are tied. If I have, sixty-five percent of my customers that come in are over the age of sixty and they are looking for things to help them sleep, to help with pain relief, to help with inflammation, to help with anxiety, with depression, things like that. And my hands are tied on this damn little packaging that's required by the state. They can't get them open. Without consumption, I'm unable to open that for them. Without consumption, I'm unable to show them a different way of consuming. Also, the biggest misconception about cannabis is that it gets you high. There are a lot of patients in my store that are not getting high off the cannabis they're using. They're using those tinctures. They're using those patches that they're talking about. I have a customer that visits us all the time who has Crohn's disease and uses those RSO tablets. They're CBD. What you will get in Trinity, if you pass this, you're gonna get the same activities you're getting, but you're gonna be having a store that is selling white market product, which is so important. Every single product that comes through my store has a twenty-seven-page COA attached to it. There is no mold in that product. Also, real quick before I go, I am hoping to apply for this. I hope you guys do pass this. What I do at Pacific Paradise is I have a mission to protect these legacy farmers in the Emerald Triangle. All of my flour is local. If you want to talk about the tax revenue, we sold a billion dollars last year during the summertime and that was of small batch legacy farmers in Trinity, Humboldt County and Mendocino County. They need your support more than ever. And I hope when you partner with somebody you give a license to, it is not a big-name brand who's coming out of LA. They're not gonna carry your local product. Together, we can enhance the lives of the farmers, we can enhance the life of the community, we can keep it small, we can keep it local. It is in who you choose to partnership with. I hope to keep that in mind. And I look forward to the opportunity to apply. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Tekla Johnson. Am I really close to this? Yep. I live and work here in Weaverville and I am here on behalf of the Weaverville Chamber of Commerce Board. And I have a letter to read today from our board. We also wrote this a bit ago, so some of the terminology might not be perfect, but you're all gonna get the gist. The Weaverville Chamber is proud to represent Weaverville business sector in Trinity County. Our mission is to work with the Board of Supervisors, government entities, community organizations and local businesses to improve the business climate of our, and our visitors' experiences in Weaverville. We accomplish our mission by promoting healthy business environment, asserting leadership and business growth and promoting tourism and recreation. The Weaverville Chamber of Commerce is in support of an expedited process in approving licensed retail cannabis storefronts in Weaverville. Retail cannabis storefronts are a legal business which have been approved in several California communities with success. They have brought resources into the community and existing businesses have thrived when working in conjunction with retail cannabis storefronts, per reports by leaders in those communities such as Shasta Lake City and Santa Rosa. To educate our local Weaverville Chamber business members and to solicit feedback on retail cannabis, the Chamber hosted a special workshop in September of two thousand and twenty with three panel members who spoke on retail cannabis. The panel included Shasta Lake City's Assistant City Managers, Jessica Lugo, who spoke at length on the positive impacts of licensed cannabis retail storefronts in her community. And she answered questions and addressed concerns from the Weaverville-based business owners. Trinity County repeatedly ranks as having one of the highest poverty rates in the state of California. This distinction should challenge us to embrace new opportunities, especially in consideration of the economic impact of COVID-nineteen. The Weaverville Chamber is cognizant of our duty to support existing businesses in addition to fostering new commerce with the goal of bolstering our local tax base and economy. The current retail cannabis licensing process can take years, thus creating unnecessary delays in generating capital for our local economy. Today, we asked the Trinity County Planning Commission to streamline county permit and licensing, I'll say ordinance in there too, processes for all business sectors, including retail cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any more comments in the gallery?
Hello, my name is Amber Carmen. I am a Weaverville business owner and a Weaverville resident, have been most of my life. I'd like to point out that I'd like to see a business that has not been affected positively by the cannabis industry in Trinity County. I think everybody, including maybe even electricians, benefit from some of the cannabis industry here in the county. I'd also like to point out that the statistics that were handed out earlier do not delineate between legal cannabis grows and illegal grows. I'm willing to bet that the majority of this has been illegal. People travel and look for places within Trinity County to stop for cannabis. When I go out of the area, I do the same thing. I've come across many dispensaries, mostly beautifully designed and very well-equipped to handle anybody coming through the door. They ID everybody that comes into the door at all times. The chance for an underage person to get inside is extremely low, if nonexistent. I encourage you all who have never been to a cannabis dispensary or retail business to please take yourself into one. You don't have to actually buy anything. Cannabis stores, um, are very nice and classy. There is not people hanging around in the parking lot smoking. There is usually a pretty high turnover and traffic, as a matter of fact, because people want to get on their way. The economic flow from retail cannabis will help Trinity County. It will help citizens with more job opportunities. And these are jobs that don't necessarily require a degree, so we can actually give jobs to people that really need it here. The revenues for the county coffers, while that's just, we can't even describe what that could do for us. The increase in tourism and business growth, it will affect all businesses, whether they're cannabis-involved, like, um, some of the other people here, or not cannabis-involved like mine. The tourism will promote other businesses to open as well. The way I see it, retail cannabis, we all win, except the old stigma about cannabis that seems to linger here. I hope we can transcend that stigma and be able to put Trinity County on the Emerald Trail. Medical is, uh, for medical patients, we've heard it all tonight. People are traveling to Redding. I purchase for, uh, some elderly folks here in Weaverville that are church-going members, great members of society, raise their kids here. And they go and send somebody like me or another friend to go pick up their supply for them for the month. So if we had retail cannabis business, it would be safer for our children, safer for our elderly, safer for our streets. Right now, we have no retail cannabis and our streets are a mess. I don't know if you've noticed, but businesses are being robbed, people are being robbed, has nothing to do with retail cannabis. So maybe, maybe this could be the answer, just progress and make things better for all of us as a community in Trinity. So please, I encourage you to consider streamlining the process or whatever it is that everybody is saying tonight. Let's do this and do it right and make it safe and make it beneficial for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Andrew Franklin, Junction City, and I just want to take a moment to urge this commission to. Quickly and efficiently create a pathway for retail cannabis in Trinity County. It's long overdue. And, uh, our citizens, you've heard all the comments here. There's nothing more to say. I just want to say. I took the time to drive in from Junction City because this is an important issue. And it's very, very much long overdue that we're not getting the benefits of what's being grown here, losing the tourism dollars. Retail in Trinity County is suffering terribly. I, I was in retail, Mountain Marketplace for 23 years and. In Weaverville and I know what it's like and it's really rough right now. And any opportunity we have. To bring a business to our towns that may attract more people is something we really need to do. And please don't make it too onerous on these business owners that want to operate these businesses here. Make it quick, make it efficient. And let's just get this taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Catherine Sidman. I'm one of the many, uh, pro-cannabis citizens in Lewiston, California. Thankfully, I want to start out by thanking the commission. I was a planning commissioner in the Portland metro area and I had the distinct honor of, um. Hearing the first Walmart application in Portland. And our meetings went from people seeking a CUP to national news. So I understand a little bit of the pressures that you might be feeling and I appreciate it. I think that this. Commission has more influence right now, especially with the general plan. Land use is so important, so I thank you as your neighbor. I thank you for your service. Um, I brought five studies that I'd like to put in the record. I'll give them to you when I'm done. The first one is, I'll go real fast. Published in 2019, all the citations are here, based on the 2013, 2015 Healthy Kids Colorado survey data. Um, permitting or not permitting recreational cannabis dispensaries in a community does not change student cannabis use or perceptions. Perceptions towards cannabis. So high school students are not influenced to use more cannabis, according to this study that was done. Over a number of years in Colorado. Second study, um, was published. Was a survey of study of information from 1991 to 2015. And the conclusion was no evidence between 1991 and 2015 of increases. In adolescents reporting a 30-day marijuana use or heavy marijuana use associated with medical marijuana dispensaries or retail outlets. The study was published in 2015 by the Journal of Studies on Alcohol and Drugs. Density of medical marijuana dispensaries was not associated with violent or property crimes. Uh, this study was published in 2017. Results indicated that mean property and violent crime rates with 100-foot buffers of tobacco shops and alcohol outlets. But not marijuana dispensaries substantially exceeded community-wide mean prop rates. If you're upset about crime, get rid of alcohol in our historic district. If you're upset about crime, get rid of alcohol in the bowling alley where children are. If you're upset about crime. Um, this study, last but not least, published by Yale. According to an estimate, an increase of one to two storefront dispensaries in a county is associated with a 17% reduction. Commissioner Sharp, a 17% reduction in opioid-related mortality rates. That's an issue in our county and medical marijuana dispensaries are associated with a reduction in those deaths of people. I'm a mom, I love Jesus, I have a family, I'm a Nana. I consume cannabis every day. My husband uses it medically. I use it for the side effects. I'm free to do that. I should be free to buy it in Trinity County from my neighbors.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello Chair Sharp, respected commissioners, Andy Johnson, Weaverville. I wanted to talk on a few concerns, um, that I might have that may not make this successful. Um, we've heard lots of great reasons for this. Few of my concerns that I've heard, um, reading letters of opposition, uh, are the zoning requirements. I've heard, um, right now, as, as shown, their, the proposal is for C1, C2, and highway commercial zoning. I think, uh, that makes total sense to me. This is a retail operation, our retail operations. I think that, uh, many of the folks who are concerned about cultivation in the wrong areas, we look at that as a zoning flaw. You say, hey, these are in residential neighborhoods. We don't want the smell, we don't want the traffic. That's not going to be an issue if you're in retail, retail zoning. Um, concerned about limiting the number of our licenses. I hear, hey, we have one pharmacy. Let's stick with one license right now. Let's do a test pilot. I think that's, um, rather. Unappropriate. We've got this, uh, flavor of capitalism here in America that people love and say makes us the greatest country in the world. I think letting the market determine, um, obviously Hyam Palm has, does not have four hardware stores. I don't think we're going to see certain areas of the county have six dispensaries that last, if six do go through the onerous, um, task of getting a license. Many other concerns, one that I haven't heard tonight is the advantages, we obviously are missing out on sales tax. I've heard that plenty. Um, we have a two-and-a-half percent tax in place right now that would go in effect right away when retail sales do start. Um, we are also missing out on Prop 64 state grant money. A million dollars we missed on last year because we don't have retail. If plenty of cultivation, we're missing on that. A million dollars would go a long way. Give half of that to the sheriff. I think he would be very happy to be able to fairly compensate his people and hire other positions. Um, I would also ask that we don't apply extraneous conditions on folks who are looking to apply for a license. We've got great state guidelines. Our county has managed to screw up lots of things with cultivation. Um, we lean on the state guidelines. I think that will really protect us and also allow for what's been successful in many other areas. Again, I heard it voiced before, but over a million dollars in Shasta Lake and it's been a successful program. They have three stores in Shasta Lake City. And, uh, I heard Jessica Lugo present to the Board of, uh, or rather the Chamber of Commerce. Um, it was very compelling. She had nothing negative to say about it. Uh, crime rates and things like that, that we all assume would be a problem. You know, I see more blighted properties on our main street we need to enforce across all businesses, not just cannabis. Let's just, let's just go with our zoning and have appropriate, uh, enforcement of violations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. John Brower from Junction City. Um, I know there's a lot of concern in the community about, um, the state regs being sufficient to properly regulate this activity. And here are the state regs. It's legal now. And for some, it's about red eyes and seeing how high you can get. For some others, it is truly a medical necessity. And I've seen it improve lives where nothing else seemed to, seemed to have any beneficial effect. Especially in life, in our senior community. This is a, this is a medical necessity for some. Uh, the ordinance is, uh, as drafted, is pretty good. It deals mostly with the land use side of this as the state has. Taken a good, hard crack at the operational side. I think you guys should stay far away from the operations, let the state handle that. Um, but there is one thing that must be changed and that's on page two. Section two, under definitions. It seems to me that the, the thing that's really missing here is, is there's. The beginning of the document with the findings of fact, the wherashes talks extensively about the medical, the medical, the Prop 215 and such. But if you take the storefront retail definition. Storefront retail means a licensed retailer selling adult-use recreational cannabis or cannabis products to the end user or customer. And it continues, but if we just add the word and/or medical. To the definitions after adult-use recreational. By the way, we should strike the word recreational. It's nowhere in statute. It's nowhere in the state regs. California does not have recreational cannabis. It has both adult-use. Type A license with the state and medical type M license with the state. So Trinity must include safe access. You know, especially for those where this really is a medical necessity and it can be done in a safe way and, and. You know, I'm a father of some young teens and there's weed everywhere throughout the state. There's no high school in the state that's free of cannabis at this point. Hasn't been for decades. But if Trinity can successfully make this transition to a regulated market, then I, I can have a hope that. Someone would be, have to get carded by a licensed security officer to enter a retail establishment. Instead of buying from an unlicensed retailer. And it's just a, it's a very logical step.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for your comments.
And there's something else is the. Commissioner Sharp, you, when you described your, your, uh, letter to Sheriff Saxon at the beginning of the meeting. You also described your bias.
John, thanks, but your time's up. Appreciate it.
You to consider recusing from cannabis decisions.
Thank you for your comments, John.
Or at least disclosing your bias. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carla Avila from Hyam Palm. I am the Executive Director of the Trinity County Agriculture Alliance. I am also a mother and a musician and professional artist and, um. I raise my children on my licensed cannabis farm and I am here to say today that, um. The, the statistics and, and the things that we are trying to work through as a community, especially the crime. The impacts are due to the war on drugs. And rehabilitation from that and healing from that is going to take us some time. And so we're all in that process now and this is a very important moment in that process for our communities. We've seen a lot of testimony tonight as to the absolute need for medical safe access for patients. And I am another one who can testify that many people in our community, many senior citizens, many patients who've had cancer have come to me over the years. Um, in search of clean, safe medicine that they know is produced organically with, um, clean practices and that is safe for them to access. Now my medicine goes licensed up the supply chain. It is tested with a COA, uh, is very, very robust testing. And it does not go anywhere further in the supply chain until that COA is passed. This system that the state has designed, because it precedes federal progression that will be coming, is incredibly robust regulatorily. And so we do have the 600-foot setback, the 1,000-foot for consumption. We have incredibly robust testing requirements. There are so many mechanisms built in to the regulatory process to ensure public health and safety. And that is the ultimate goal. We would really like to see in our communities and what we're all struggling to find the answers to. But I do believe the answers lie in sound, solid land use. I think this ordinance is very solid. I think these commercial zonings are absolutely appropriate and I think that the system designed for protection around it regulatorily. Is in place so that we can proceed as a county comfortably, the planning commission focused on land uses and move forward. Move forward into the next step, the next phase of healing beyond the impacts of the war on drugs and bringing our county, its citizens and its. Not just our licensed retail. I mean, I'd love to see, as a cultivator, I'd love to see my product on a Trinity County shelf and be able to. Provide it safely to patients in my local community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any more comments from the gallery?
Hello Chair, um, Commissioners. Um, I'm Dr. Tammy from Douglas City. Yes, I own the Red Barn. We need retail in Trinity. You have no idea, I'm starting off times when we have fires and other things happen here, how I go and I wander under and. Um, I do a lot of things you've never heard of. I've got a lot of these people who, uh. Take opioids by the fistful and swallow it down with fifth whiskey. And they don't do that anymore. And these are ladies that are part of the community and then things just got out of grip. The fire with the COVID, things like that. How many kids would I have gone and had to take and put, um, in the, in the programs, the addiction programs? Because I realize when they call me, I, I, they've got a problem. I'm also a trainer for 82 children, for their doctors, their parents, those psychiatrists and all that stuff. And I can't get, even though I, who I am, I can't get them their medicine. Because I don't have a dispensary. So I've got to go send them to Redding or make a run very, very quickly to go with them, with the parent and tell them what they need. And they've gotten out of touch, some of them, although dispensaries are very good, they've gone out of touch with knowing what the patients need. Okay, and there, there's a certain line there that is for patients. And, um, with the children or some of these children that I'm talking about are 32-years-old and they're autistic, okay, and they're equivalent to a three-year-old. And they need special medicine. And so if we had a program up here where I could open the retail, we could go and we could have really good medicine for them. Of which I could dial in and work with these growers and get it so that Trinity had their own medicine. We all work in unison together so that we would all have a great product. I also wanted to tell you a little story while I can. Got one minute. In 1852, nine years before Abraham Lincoln, the Weaverville Drugstore on Main Street was selling cannabis flower. Bud, elixirs, tinctures, and lotions. The cannabis was grown in Trinity County. The dispensary bottles are dated 1860 and they're sitting right there. Okay, those bottles? Cannabis was grown in Trinity County. It was taken by horse and wagon to New York, Ohio, to companies like Lilly or Lloyd &amp; Brothers. And made into tincture lotion, elixirs, and brought back, all the way back to Trinity. To be for sale on Main Street in the Weaverville Drugstore. It was a medicine and that's part of our history. Okay, cannabis has always. Okay, cannabis has always been Trinity's hidden treasure. It's time that we kind of wake up, help the other people in this community with our, with the whole program we have of cannabis. And we help our patients too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any more comments from the gallery? Yeah, go, go ahead with the letter and then we'll hear from. Thank you.
Hi, thanks. Dana Hauser Scott from Hayfork. Thank you, Chair. I wanted to second what John Brower mentioned about Chair, your bias and your comments earlier at the beginning of the meeting. I looked at the email that you say Sheriff Saxon sent with the attachment. Though I question its authenticity. Be, unless there's just an error in it on the third liner. It should be zero percent.
Ma'am, do you have any comments related to storefront cannabis?
I do, and I
Okay, we'd appreciate if you could get to that.
Sure. So there is only, as far as I know, there's one CVS in the county. I'm not, I know that the previous pharmacy in Hayfork years ago closed down, but the difference is with medication can be mailed direct to your PO box or to your house, delivered to your house. That's not the case with cannabis. So limiting retail to buy any sort of artificial number that you create, I do not support. It should be regulated, it should be based off of the need and natural natural, sorry, I'm a little flustered. That should be determined based off of businesses' decisions and not an artificial number that the county caps. There are countless reasons why we need retail in Trinity County. You've heard hundreds tonight. They're all valid. I support all of them. And I hope that this is an easy decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any more comments from the gallery?
Good evening, Chair. Commissioners, my name is Sean Elliott. I'm from Lewiston. I'd like to speak to the the scenic Vista Conservation Overlay. That overlay based on the general plan from 50 years ago, what have you, that doesn't just apply to cannabis or to retail or to anything. That applies to every property within those zoning types. Anybody that's in those sections, they are required to get a DUP if you remove vegetation from your property. If you build a house, you're required to get a DUP. That is not negotiable. The mere fact that this is being enforced on cannabis and has not been enforced on anybody who resides along Goose Ranch Road, Rush Creek Estates, any of those places where this is a current active policy. That is in Trinity County Ordinance 1725.020. That is a legal ordinance. Why has that not been enforced before? But now cannabis is under that. I just find that to be hypocritical and wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other comments from the gallery? No, you may not. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to take it to Zoom for comments.
Lele? Oh, hi, thank you. Hi, my name is Lillenia Dubois, and I really appreciated all the community's comments. I'm 51. I was raised in Burnt Ranch. I now live in Humboldt County. I do have multiple cannabis products, but I've also chaired the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission. I have directly personally experienced many of the negative impacts of drug war in Trinity County and Humboldt County. I have been raped and it was hidden. As a single disabled mother with a spinal cord injury, I was repeatedly robbed because of my medicine and much more. As a commissioner, I have seen other horrors that have gotten hidden under the drug war, like human trafficking in our communities. I hated cannabis until my spinal cord injury in 1999. In 1999, I ended up in a wheelchair and then a coma from an allergic reaction to the drugs meant to help me. After that coma, my local family asked me to turn to cannabis. It was then that I saw it was a drug war I was against, not the plant. I became an advocate of legalization to have the rug pulled on the crime and the oppression the drugs, the drug war created on our beautiful communities. Research has been done in communities nationwide, which you've already been quoted, some really great resources to share that information with you that shows that legalization helps with crime rate. In 2020, the U.S. Department of Agricultural Economic Research Service and Appalachian State University conducted a study on the impacts of legalization and they stated the results indicate that marijuana laws result in significant reductions in both violent and property crime rates. When I became an advocate, oh, sorry, I lost myself. You will see that nationwide communities that embrace retail, they see not only a decrease in crime rates, but they also see lower amounts of youth accessibility. In our communities in particular, it is important to support the small legal farmers, giving them accessible retail opportunities and encouraging the legal marketplace, discouraging the illegal marketplace and keeping more tax dollars from the new market in the county. Without retail, you are creating hardships on your elderly and patients as well as encouraging illegal sales. With retail, you create accessible legal sales as well as bring the tax dollars home. Thank you. I just want to say this plant has truly saved my life and empowered me to be a better community member and get back to the community. And not having retail accessibility is hurting the, our communities and really increasing what we don't like, which is smoking everywhere and kids on the corner handing deals. Creating retail is, is going to make Weaverville in Trinity County a better place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Yes. Ken Hammack?
Hi, thanks for inviting me in today. Ken Hammack, I'm with Humboldt County. I'm, work on economic development and tourism issues, but I'm also in the cannabis industry as a dispensary owner. I think I'll keep my comments fairly short. In Humboldt, we're recognizing that there's a certain amount of tourism that's really beneficial in addition to the tax dollars earned at the retail level in the county. But there's also an educational opportunity and Trinity is really part of the brain trust of the Emerald Triangle. So this would really be a, a big help on the tourism side for Trinity to be able to offer that local knowledge to the tourism that are out there, but in a nice, clean space that's legal, that's been tested, that tells the whole Trinity story from the farm to the retail space. So I just encourage, we've had our ups and downs with the industry itself, but overall we're really happy with what's going on in Humboldt County with the retail level. We just hope that there is more throughout California to help the patients, especially that need it the most right now. Thanks for your time today and good luck.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
L. Wills? L. Wills? I'll go to the next one then. LM?
Good evening, Chair Sharp and Commissioners. This is Liz McIntosh from Junction City. I urge you to please pass its ordinance today with the least amount of red tape and regulations as possible. I agree with others. I'd love to see variances, no DUPs and no caps on how many businesses we allow. In reference to Commissioner Falls' earlier comment, I'd also love to see that County Code 17.41.010 prohibiting dispensaries is repealed with the passage of this ordinance. BOS Resolution 2016-077 speaks to how cannabis should be regulated in Trinity County and passing this ordinance is in alignment with its goals, especially Goal 1 and 4, which are Trinity County will be a safe place for all residents to live, work or enjoy retirement and to raise their families. And Trinity County will regain its reputation as a popular tourist destination. Allowing this in every zone that allows for retail is the right thing to do, and I believe especially so in downtown Weaverville. We, the people, and especially our most vulnerable seniors, do not have safe access and the safest access is in the places most accessible. The safest place from crime are in the light, in places where more people frequent. The best thing we can do for tourism is to attract people to various parts of our county, but when we attract them downtown, they'll likely visit other stores too. If they get to consume, they'll likely get the munchies and eat at our local restaurants. So win-win. Further, you may have seen the article recently about our schools sounding off about falling ADA, which is a direct line to their funding. At least one school had the courage to acknowledge that we are losing families who are unable to succeed in the legal industry here. Much of that failure is due to onerous regulations, which this county has chosen to compound. You want families, you want tourism, you want safety, you want more tax revenue? This is a start. Please let the market dictate the success, not onerous regulations, because that is the American way. And let's be fair. Let's acknowledge our history is drenched in exploitation, brothels, alcoholism and poverty. And this ain't the devil's lettuce no more. It is the invisible hand of all of our businesses for the past 30 years. It is historic. It's medicine. It saves lives and improves quality of life. And lastly, I don't need Big Brother telling me how to keep my children safe. Big Brother has failed. Just Say No has failed. Legalization and education are the only way forward. I urge you to streamline passage of this today for medical and adult use, for freedom and for democracy. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you for your comments.
Lori Wills?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. I was having problems on the hearing. My name is Lori Wills from Lewiston. I just wanted to say that I do support the need for retail stores in Trinity County. So thank you in advance for bringing this draft forward. I may have missed it, but I did not see any specific language that states whether or not deliveries are allowed or disallowed. So maybe Sean can address that unless you already, unless the Commissioner has already known the answer to that. I don't see any language that prohibits drive-through windows. So for example, if the Red Barn in Douglas City were to be issued a storefront license, I could see a possible drive-through window there at that location. So does the ordinance allow for that or not? And again, maybe Sean can answer that question. I strongly encourage a cap on the number of cannabis retail stores, which is no different than the county cap being the number of cultivation licenses that are permitted. I'm also wondering whether or not you've given any thought to prohibiting big chains like Medmen Stores from coming into the county and setting up shop, which may make it difficult for small business owners like Tammy and others to compete against these national retail operations. I'd like to see priority be given to the local business owners over these national chains, if that's possible. I also noticed in Humboldt County's ordinance that they do require an operations manual to be submitted to the Planning Commission with their application. I think there's some language in the draft ordinance about that, but it wasn't really clear to me. So I recommend that we review that language in the draft ordinance to be more specific about this requirement, which would include details about business owner's security plans unless that all falls underneath the state language. So that's all I can think of at this time. I encourage you to move forward with your recommendations to the board. I think this is definitely needed in our county and I thank you very much for your time and your service.
Thank you for your comments.
Veronica Kelly Albies?
Good evening, Commissioners. Sorry, I turned something down here. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Veronica Kelly Albies, Douglas City. And I would like to also say that I support retail within the county, although I do think that this document that's been put before, before you needs some more work. If there's not enough time to create community-specific recommendations from public input received, there won't be time to ensure community is able to support having retail and could further inflame the current tensions that exist throughout Trinity County. Let's plan this appropriately, not just throw it to the state and hope they enforce. I'm, I don't think onsite consumption should be allowed. And if it is going to be considered, are you going to be looking at the cumulative effects of those that are located next to ours? Because I think that does need to be taken a look at because it could put more impaired drivers on the road.
Oh my God, are you talking about?
It's all cumulative effects. It's part of CEQA. And how they, and not having the admin forms ready to be viewed. They're asking you, the staff is asking you to pass something blind without having seen how they're going to be using that. There are a lot of letters that have been for a specific business and most public, most public comments are for medical use. And I think that is a compelling reason to have retail stores within Trinity County. I do think there should be a cap on them. And I sent you a letter earlier in the week, so I think those are my main comments, but we come out the gate strong. Let's work, have something for all residents within the Trinity County. There have been amazing arguments tonight, or not arguments, comments tonight about needing this within Trinity County, but let's plan it. And let's do it right. And I appreciate all of the time that you're taking to ask good questions and to listen to everybody. And thank you very much for your service. I am done with my time, but my husband David is here. If I could pass his three minutes over to him now, I just couldn't, we're sharing a computer tonight.
That's fine.
Oh, I appreciate that. And I don't want to get in front of anybody. Yes, I support retail. I support retail.
Please state your name.
Oh, Dave Albies. My wife did it for me. I thought, you know, she has a lot for me. Okay, so Douglas City. I support retail. I think it's a, a needed revenue within, within our county and it is needed for medical purposes and for recreational. What I don't support is it's any kind of retail next to residential areas. Again, that is what's caused the major series of problems between the marijuana industry and the residents that are in opposition to having it in their backyard. If we kept it out of the rural residential areas and kept it within the commercial places it's intended, I've been to Arcade, I've been to Fort Bragg, they're beautiful stores. They're very well regulated. You wouldn't know one from the other when you go downtown and run very well and efficiently. But I also note that the county has their own say. They just don't, carte blanche, say state, take it over. And one of the problems that I have with residents is my, my older brother lives in Chastel Lake and he lives in a residential area attached to one of those retail outlets. And everybody goes into his neighborhood, parks their car and walks to the retail so they don't, they're not seen. They also go back in, smoke. The whole neighborhood is turned into a disaster area. It's not 100% because that retail outlet is there, but it is, it is contributes a massive amount to it. So I want the supervisors and the Commissioners here tonight to look at the fact that if you put these things out in the communities in, you know, like the Red Barn, et cetera, you're, you're inviting all of that that comes with it to, to spill over into residential areas. And that includes traffic within the residential areas. We're rural residential. If you want to go downtown and have a business, that's fantastic. Putting it out in, in, on highway commercial right next to residential areas in the middle of nowhere where it can't be regulated or seen by law enforcement is a big mistake and will cause that rift to further divide us all when we don't need to do that. And I thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Amanda Baragar?
Hi, thanks for taking my comments. Amanda Baragar, Junction City. I'm calling in to support retail in Trinity County. I believe that we deserve safe access, lab-tested, regulated products as opposed to the current local option, which is off the black market. I believe that Trinity residents should not have to drive to Reading or Humboldt to purchase these legal products. This is especially unjust for folks with limited means of transportation. and seniors and patients that use them medically. Um, dispensaries create jobs, most of these pay very well compared to other retail jobs. Um, and if you check other cities that do this and towns that do this, you'll find that employees love their jobs and its benefits. Uh, Trinity County is not eligible to receive the state Prop sixty-four grant money. And we would be able to get more of those funds if we had retail sales. And tourism and other businesses would benefit, uh this is proven in other communities. And then, you know, especially I believe that the tax revenue is going to improve the infrastructure of Trinity County across the board. Trinity has an existing special tax of two point five percent on retail cannabis sales. And having one of the highest poverty rates in California and a meager county budget, we could really use that money. Just two days ago, our sheriff was doing his staff report to the Board of Supervisors. And once again, speaking on the literal crisis that they are in, in his office and keeping the staff in Trinity County. They are leaving the county to find better wages in neighboring counties. We don't have, we're not, we're not giving the funds to our local infrastructure to even pay to take care of what we do have, and we really desperately need that money. Um, I believe that this would be better for our community and helpful for those in need and provide safe access. And I also really urge all of you to take into consideration the thoughtful and helpful resources that have been provided to you. I've heard some great comments as well as studies that have been submitted. Um, those are all really useful resources for you to make a wiser choice on this matter. So thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Tyler Thompson?
Uh, yeah, hi, good evening, uh Commissioners, thank you. Um, I would just also like to uh voice support for moving the retail ordinance forward to the Board of Supervisors. Um, so that uh access can be provided to local Trinity County residents. Um, I would also like to advocate for uh letting free market and capitalism um dictate the amount of retail that's viable in Trinity County and not have it be artificially limitation, limited potentially price-controlling um by government. Um, I do, I would like to uh encourage small business. Um, and I don't know how that can be looked at to uh benefit uh local, local people uh to get a leg up over um state or national companies. Um, but that is for, for you to work out potentially. And um I would also just like to echo um that with the passage of retail and cultivation and Prop sixty-four in California, um, the days of, you know, movies of Al Capone ruling the alcohol industry um may be behind us in the cannabis industry as well. I, I do believe that there were and are um negative, negative impacts uh that, that have been flourishing um due to the war on drugs. But by moving it into a licensed and regulated market, I think uh those movies will not be our future, but will be our past. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Carol Fensel?
Hi, thank you. Um, my name is Carol Fensel, I'm from Lewiston, and I've got some concerns with the zoning classifications. So there's three zoning classifications that are being considered to be approved for dispensaries. These classifications are fifty years out of date, back in the time when nobody ever considered that marijuana would be able to be legal and sold. So I think we need to look at this by a, on a site-by-site basis, or redo the zoning plan first. We don't want the zoning problems with dispensaries that we have with the commercial cannabis grows in residential neighborhoods because the plan was not redone before licenses were permitted. I think we should also consider using CUPs and not just DUPs. And I hope that we do this a lot smarter than we did the commercial cannabis grows. Without the community input, the grows were put in places they didn't belong, and we're now paying the price for that. And I'd like to see this be done with a lot more thought, pre-planning, and getting us the information before the meetings so that we can talk about it, write letters about it, and not just throw it at us at the last minute. And that's all. Thank you. Oh, and you changed the link, so we couldn't log on. I wonder how many people could not figure out how to log into this meeting? So why was the link changed and not advertised? It really sounds like we're trying to be silenced.
Thank you for your comments.
Tom Blanco?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of Commission, Tom Blanco, Douglas City. Uh, I guess like all the other cannabis supporters and users, I was able to find the link to the meeting. Uh, I am in favor of this moving forward. I do think the suggestion John Brower made about adding medical to the definition is appropriate and essential. Um, I would encourage us uh to not repeat the mistakes of cultivation and align with the state regulations. It's very appropriate for us to consider land use, and we can do that through zoning. And I think the zones you have listed are good. Any place where alcohol or tobacco can be sold, I think is appropriate to sell cannabis. When you look at the actual impact of this kind of facility, we're talking about a building that people go into and they come out of with a package. That's all we're talking about. So that is a minimal impact. There are zones that are zoned for that, we have them already, it's no different from alcohol or tobacco. Uh, I think that's where it belongs. I would encourage you to uh, if for no other reason in the interest of our long-suffering planning staff, to simplify any additionality that you put in for the county. Let's just keep it with state regulations, they're extraordinarily robust. They're extraordinarily expensive to comply with. I don't think we're going to see very many people able to meet all these requirements, so I don't think we need a cap. But I do want to see some fast action. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Ryan Tarbell?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Ryan Tarbell of Aforc. Well, I'm not sure I thought I'd ever see this day, but we, we almost have unanimous support for, for a cannabis item. Uh, so I'm pretty excited about that. And just uh really um you know, heartwarmed by all the stories that we've heard tonight of all the people that, that use cannabis as medicine and all the good that it's done for people. Um, and I do support moving this ordinance forward. Um, I think there's a lot of good aspects in this ordinance. Um, the use of a director's decision um and following state guidelines to streamline this process is is very applicable and helpful, I think, um to get storefront retail up and going in Trinity County. I would like to echo some of the other comments about adding um into the definition of storefront retail, also adding medical, so it's adult use and medical, I think that's critical. Um, a lot of people use that medical designation uh to buy their medicine tax-free, and uh we really need to um allow that here in Trinity County. Um, I really also support the allowance for consumption. Um, I think that'll be really good to help um cannabis tourism and, and make uh cannabis a destination here in Trinity County. I really liked a lot of the comments uh talking about how we're going to access grant funds and tax, tax money through Measure G. Um, if we can get these retail locations up and going and get this ordinance passed. Um, I also support cannabis retail um where any other retail business is located in Trinity County, including Highway Commercial, C-one and C-two. Um, using these zoning designations uh will really limit the impacts in residential areas. Uh, and I think it's uh very appropriate and applicable. Um, I also support no cap on the number of retail locations within the county. Um, I really think we should let the market dictate the number of retailers in the county. Um, and we're not going to end up with too many. But having access in our different communities uh to storefront cannabis retail, I think is very important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Deidra?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Um, I am in full support of retail cannabis in Trinity County uh for the same reasons as many of the previous speakers. I think there was a lot of great input tonight, and we should be providing a clean, safe environment for our residents and our visitors to get the medicine or the adult entertainment that they are seeking. Um, it is a really expensive process to uh have a retail establishment and comply with the regulations and to make it a nice place that people want to come and feel safe and clean and all of that. Um, so I, I don't think we should cap the number, I think we should let the market decide that. Uh, it is the capitalism way. I think the commercial zones are appropriate, we're not talking about it in residential neighborhoods. And if, you know, there are no new commercial zones that I'm aware of, so residential zone, residential homes that are in those areas were, were aware or should have been aware of the commercial zones when they purchased. Um, and I also like Lori Will's idea of supporting the local business owners and not just opening up to national chains. We did a similar thing with the cultivation ordinance and allowed um our local residents an opportunity to participate in the uh, in the licensing before we opened it up for other people. Um, so uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Nancy Anderson?
Hi, thank you, Nancy Anderson from Lewiston, and I just want to echo um, I believe Lori Will's covered pretty much what I was going to say, that I am in favor of this ordinance. Uh, I would just caution that it be done right. Um, other comments were made, and I don't remember by whom, that we just want to make sure we don't have to go back and have conflict over things that may have been overlooked or not planned well enough. So uh, I was very pleased to meet someone, and I see her on Zoom. Uh, Carrie Hurley, I made friends with uh a gal who really helped me to see this from a different perspective. And uh, she's working on something called the Emerald Trail, and I really like what she's done with the concept of making a corridor of commerce coming our way, taking advantage of this uh attraction that we have. Um, I've signed up to be a part of it, and I think it would be an excellent way of, of legitimizing legal, well-done. Uh, I call it cannabis done right. Um, where we are a community that, that celebrates a strength instead of fighting over the logistics of how it happens. Um, I'm glad to see that there's some, some hope in terms of uniting us on at least one topic in cannabis that I think it is a much better way of managing than having uh the black market getting all the money. So uh, good job, everyone, working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Lisa Wright?
Thank you, Chair Sharp, Commissioners Lisa Wright from Lewiston. What a terrific night, I echo so many of the commenters' um comments. Um, very in favor of retail cannabis, really all forms of cannabis um for Trinity County. I think it only has promise, and the downside, I, I really haven't seen any. I urge the Commission to kind of stick to uh your job, which is around good land use planning. So I think that the zones that have been recommended are appropriate. This is where we find any other um retail. I don't think you should put any kind of caps. Uh, we don't put caps on, you know, other things, there's no cap on how many places can sell cigarettes, for example. Um, I say stick with the state regs, do the good land use planning, and let's get some additional tax revenue and tourism traffic. I own a business in Weaverville, and I happen to um help the cannabis industry with regulatory compliance and, and license and permit applications. And we have a cannabis leaf incorporated into our logo. And being right across from the Nugget on Main Street, we get traffic of people looking for a location in Trinity County. They can't believe that in the Emerald Triangle and how well-known we are for cannabis, that we don't have a retail location. Um, people who are coming through town, stopping, who are tourists, but also local people. And I would say the majority, the vast majority, are seniors who are looking for alternatives to opioids. And um, now we hear, we've heard the stories about all of the great benefits. So I think this is just all a win-win, and I urge you to pass this on to the Board of Supervisors uh expediently so that we can actually begin the operations and realize the advantages. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Jeff?
Hi, Jeff Cudella, Xenia. Um, I'd like to echo a couple of the people's comments about keeping this uh keeping the, the land use how it is. Um, retail is retail, I believe it's acceptable everywhere. Um, don't put some sort of de facto ban on this by increasing setbacks. Um, I'm not sure what, what purpose they serve beyond their current limits. Um, you know, putting a limit on how many there are doesn't make a whole lot of sense. We're trying to capture tax revenue here. We're trying to give the number one industry in Trinity County a place to sell their product in Trinity County. Um, that keeps the revenue circulating in Trinity County. If, I don't know if it's in your guys' purview or not, but if these non-local places out of SoCal or the Bay Area come up vertically integrated, they don't grow any product here, they don't manufacture anything here, they don't distribute it here, they're just looking for a retail outlet here. They won't support any of the local industry. Um, the only thing that, that won't stay here is the profits, all that's going to go. There's, there's been some change in Weaverville, some for the good, some for the bad. Main Street doesn't look that great. Um, having a couple dispensaries can change that, it brings foot traffic, it gets people to stop as they pass through. Um, and they spend money elsewhere, they learn about Weaverville, it's a great place, they have a little bit of tourism, there can be much more. There's great mountain biking trails in Weaverville. That brings active people from the city with cash to spend, they got five thousand dollar bicycles, they got a few bucks to spend on a joint at the store. And maybe they, maybe they rent a room, maybe they, you know, go out to eat. All, all the, all these things are just the ancillary benefits of having ample retail. Um, another ancillary benefit is has been well-spoken today by some of the older folks who have to travel to Reading to get their medicine. Um, that's a travesty that we don't already have this. And uh, these places need to be, you know, on two ninety-nine where people can see them so that they can help the other businesses that are already established. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
I don't see anybody else.
Okay, I think we're going to go ahead and take a short recess.
Whoa, hello, I'm here.
We didn't see your hand raised.
Oh, I didn't realize I had to raise my hand, I was trying to un-video myself. I was trying to like video myself, but I can't.
Go ahead and state your name, and let's hear your comments.
Uh, my name's Carrie Hurley, I am, I was raised in uh both Sonoma County and Trinity County due to divorced parents. I literally went to school in both areas and I literally went to school in both areas and had friends in both areas. My parents still live in both areas. I was raised back in Helena, past Hobo Gulch, so country girl through and through. I am also a stoner. I decided at 16 that instead of going for alcohol or something else that seemed dangerous to me, that I was going to smoke weed instead because I saw it as the lesser of the evils. I looked around and saw adults as having a vice and chose mine as marijuana because I thought it was the safest, and it has never done me wrong. I've, I'm professional, and my background is sales and marketing for 30 years. I worked for NBC, I've worked for McAfee, I've worked for Cliff Bar. I've been ambassador at the Chamber of Commerce in Santa Rosa, president of the Rotary Club, you know, and all of this while I'm a stoner. And I wanted the video on so that you could see, but maybe you can see from my picture. This is, this is the face of a stoner. So I don't, I just want to go back to some of the things that were said, the study that Commissioner Sharp mentioned in the beginning of this meeting. I'm just wondering, have you seen the studies about cannabis being a substitute for opioids and for meth? And then I'm wondering, where do you stand on the meth, man? Where have you been on meth? This town is full of meth. And I see all this anti-cannabis stuff, and I'm like, what is going on? I am writing a book with Chuck Sanborn on, to preserve the history of the war on drugs in Trinity County. We have an opportunity here. We have a golden A in having that branding world-renowned already at our feet. All we have to do is lean into it. And you guys can't even do that? Are you kidding me? I feel like as I'm traveling on these road trips from Trinity to Humboldt to Mendocino, that I go through a time warp when I get to about Blue Lake, and I come out of a time warp. It honestly feels like Trinity is a teenager trying to fit into like toddler clothing, and it just doesn't work, and it's uncomfortable, and it's like, no one's happy. Why? Because it doesn't make sense. Because your Pottersville or Reefer Madness or whatever imagery you got in your head that you're ginning up fear about does not hold any water. The facts are in that per the Cato Institute study that homes close to a retail dispensary, Dave, within a tenth of a mile of a retail dispensary, increased in value by approximately 8.4%. You know, that cannabis is now being used as an exit drug.
That's time, Carrie.
Thank you for your comments.
Two more comments. All right, Scott Watkins?
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and other residents of Trinity County. My name is Scott Watkins. I'm from Hayfork. There are delivery non-storefront retail licenses in Trinity County. I actually currently hold a valid non-storefront retail license issued by Trinity County and the State of California. When I applied at Trinity County, planning staff, you know, verified the zoning was a match, and that my application was complete. And I actually received a non-storefront retail license in under 72 hours. On CUPs and DUPs, one of the conditional use permit projects I worked on was started in 2018, and it just passed in 2020. Now, I have also got another project that I've been working on that's required to have a director's use permit. And that director's use permit application has been under review since January of 2020. So when the Weaverville Chamber says that they want an expedited approval process for all businesses, including cannabis, I think we should listen. I wanted to point out that there's been a couple different points over the course of the hearing about spillover economics. And that's when one shopper goes into a store, like going to a grocery store for ingredients for dinner. They also stop by the yogurt shop next door for dessert. That's a concept that I learned in planning school in 2001. It's also something I learned about in, in business school when I was earning an MBA. It's a real thing, and it does certainly apply to cannabis. And as a matter of fact, cannabis is a lot like coffee shops in that they actually do better when they're clustered together. So most people can recall a time where they've seen a Starbucks on one corner, and across the street, there's another Starbucks. They actually do better by being near each other. I also heard a really cool idea that I've got some personal experience with. Some of my old colleagues worked on what's called a formula retail ordinance. And that's something that prevents retail shops that have multiple locations from going into a certain jurisdiction. Now, a California appeals court decision did uphold a formula retail ordinance in June of 2003. So this is a longstanding policy. And I just wanted to mention that, that that idea is valid, and there are jurisdictions, not just in California, but across the country that have implemented that. And I also wanted to point out that the reason neighborhoods are safer around retail storefronts is because of the strong security measures implemented by the State of California. Now, I think a lot of us have heard about the burglaries that happen in the Bay Area around retail cannabis. Well, a lot of those burglaries are actually being solved because of the security cameras and the robust security measures and standard operating procedures that are required by the State.
It's time, Scott.
Thank you for your comments.
Helen Stone? Helen? Helen?
Oh, there, hello? Hello?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Sorry, it took me a minute there. I, I don't have any prepared remarks, but I did just want to make a comment because I have sat through this meeting and heard all these outstanding reasons that we need to have retail in Trinity County, and we really need to expedite it, and we need to put as few restrictions on it as possible, as per what, what everyone said. I've, I'm, I've lived here more than 10 years. I'm a former, I was the executive director at Roderick Senior Center, and I now am, oh my God, one of those seniors who drive down to Redding when I need something. Because although I grow a couple of plants, that's, growing plants is like, that's not exactly, that's a lot of processing that I have to do. I don't really like smoking, and eating it makes you fat, and there's just different kinds of products. And plus, it's really fun to go in there and shop as a little old lady. So I would just like to voice my 100% approval, and we're just long overdue to do this. So thank you, and please just vote it in.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, at this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll readjust at 8:38 and bring it back to the Commission for comments. Thank you.
Chairman, you want to close the public hearing?
Time, we're going to readjust the meeting and bring it back to the Planning Commission for comments and discussion.
Chair Sharp, if I may? I just want to correct some information that I gave you earlier, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
So before you had asked if we require background checks, I gave you wrong information. If you go to the ordinance 1743H050, you're going to look at point five. Live scan background checks for business owners and applicants referenced on the application are required as part of the application. So that means that it will be checked by our local sheriff. I just want to make sure that that was cleared up. I don't want to leave that in lingo and lumba.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. Okay, Commissioners, Todd, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
All right. All right, let's go ahead and break this down. I'll open it up for you guys to speak.
Well, I guess I'll start. So yeah, thank you for all your comments. I appreciate that. I appreciate your passion. And I get it. So, you know, my dad was one of the people who took advantage of medical marijuana in his battle with cancer. So, you know, I get that. But I really want to make sure it's done in the right place. I am, my heart is with youth in the county. So, and I'm concerned about normalization for people under twenty-one of cannabis use. And it's because I see other studies. You know, I read the Surgeon General's report. I read the National Academy of Sciences report that talks about how cannabis affects brain development in people under twenty-five. I see the different studies that, you know, maybe are more recent than the ones that were cited earlier, but they don't always match. There's a lot of conflicting information out there. It's not analogous to liquor and tobacco. It's still a fluid, scientific kind of thing. So, so that leads me to kind of the comments that I'm gonna make. It's just, I'm just trying to figure out how to keep the youth in this community from thinking that, you know, having medical marijuana and adult cannabis marijuana for sale on every corner in every kind of community, maybe, maybe that's not the best route at this moment. Doesn't mean it can't change. So I, I look at the general plan, the zoning. The zoning says for C one that it's interspersed with residential and that C one should be compatible with residential. So I want to give you, the business owners, the chance to use C one. So how can you do that in a way that doesn't have that conflict with residential? One way would be to exclude the opt-out areas where the residential areas have said, maybe we don't think that we feel comfortable with commercial cannabis activities. So that's one way to do it. Maybe not for the all of the Weaverville Community Services District. Maybe for Weaverville, it would be more like the, where we allowed manufacturing outside of the historic district. The historic district is pretty small. That's one thing I was thinking about. I really am in favor of the thousand-foot setback for several reasons. I mean, I like consistency in regulations. I like it to you to be able to kind of go from one type of commercial cannabis to the other and one regulation to the other and have it be consistent. So I just want to point out that there is a thousand-foot setback in the state health and safety code where you can't smoke cannabis within a thousand feet when children are present of a school, a youth facility. So same thing, you can't advertise or market cannabis within a thousand feet of a school or a youth facility. Right now, you have to be a thousand feet away from a school or youth facility if you're non-storefront cannabis. So why would storefront cannabis be allowed closer? That doesn't make sense. So if you look at other communities, Reading requires a thousand-foot setback. So anyway, I think, I think we want to be consistent and we want to consider a thousand-foot setback. I have two more things that I'm passionate about. One is that this be a conditional use permit. And that's because, again, the findings of fact that we base this ordinance on are fluid. A condition, a director's use permit is just ministerial. If you meet the criteria, you get the permit. It doesn't allow for public input so much. It doesn't allow for the community to really weigh in. So I think that you would want to have that ability for communities to weigh in. You'd want to have it a discretionary decision. I think that would be more compatible with CEQA. We require a consumptive use permit for all other commercial cannabis, again, because it's a state of flux, so why not for retail? And I don't think it is analogous to tobacco or liquor, because again, the science is just not there yet. So I think we need a conditional use permit. If you have those kind of criteria that you're not in the opt-out areas, that you have the setbacks to protect the kids. If it's a conditional use permit, then you may not need something like the cap. Reading has a cap of ten for their population. That's about one for every ten thousand people. I don't want to see Trinity County with a whole series of, of retail. But I do want to make sure that people have access to the medicine or the recreation that they want. So thoughts are something along a maximum of three twenty miles apart. You know, that's totally, that's just a suggestion. But that would allow people.
Please hold the comments in the.
That would allow people access, but it wouldn't overload the county with retail facilities. You're right, maybe we don't need that. Maybe the market should drive it. But I'm not in favor of the market if you are allowing it to be everywhere in the county, if you are not excluding opt-out areas, if you don't have setbacks that protect kids, and if you don't have a conditional use permit that allows the community to weigh in. Well, you probably wouldn't want to hear my motion. I mean, my motion would be.
We're discussing and we're not making a motion right now. And please hold your comments. Thank you.
John's right. From, from a Rosenberg's Rules of Orders, the practice is normally a motion on the floor, but it takes us a while to get to a motion, John.
And I'm happy to talk about that if you want. So typically, the procedure is that under Rosenberg's that before there's discussion, there needs to be a motion. That is not strictly enforced. If you want to have some discussion before you get to that, I will not object, especially if it's questioning or clarification. But ultimately, we will need a motion to continue talking.
Absolutely.
Oh, I'll save my other comments till later.
Well, I mean, I, I have comments to make on the ordinance and then I have, you know, feedback for Commissioner Falls. It feels like there is, there's possibly, you know, there's different cultures and different generations that are living together. I came from a Christian upbringing where my parents completely kept cannabis away from me every time we went to an event and cannabis came out. My parents shuffled me away and I grew up in Burt Ranch. I started smoking cannabis at fourteen years old because it was exotic and it was something I wasn't supposed to do. It was something that my parents didn't even want me to talk about. And it was, it was a shadow where I have other colleagues that I grew up with down in Burt Ranch. All their parents were pot growers. And I'm the only one that moved back and started growing weed. And so I think that the exoticness of it created a stigma. It creates a shadow. And the normalization of cannabis is not the, is not making it exotic. It's recognizing that it's here. And so by having it, by normalizing it is not encouraging it. Presently, it can be already purchased on street corners. It is known to be in elementary schools. It's rampant in the black market and it's not regulated. And so my perception is that having a legal, regulated storefront, just like it's in Colorado, where in Boulder, Colorado, it could be restaurant, restaurant, restaurant cannabis dispensary, restaurant, restaurant. It's normalized. It's not exotic. It doesn't stand out. I think that is, that's what I see in most places. And so the, this, yeah, so that I, I just, I come from a different perspective. I come from a different generation. I utilize cannabis as medicine and my children know that I utilize cannabis. It's normalized. It's brown-backed. It's not something that is exotic. Not only is it my medicine, but it's also in the culture that I come from. It's a way that we break bread. It's, sometimes people come over and they offer a beer or they offer a joint and they sit out on the back porch and they philosophize on the world. They don't get drunk for it. So it's, from the culture that I come from, it's not exotic. It's not the demon of the youth. The demon of the youth is alcohol, methamphetamine, unemployment. Is, that's what really makes me afraid for, in my community. So, you know, these thousand-foot setbacks to protect our children, I think putting it behind a lock and key is what would protect our children. That being said, the opt-out areas, it was established that opt-out areas need to be set with sound land use, such as water or available, or concentrations. And so NIMBY types of perspectives, like I don't want it in my community, is honestly, that's, I think that would be an illegal way of opting out communities. With regards to capping the licenses, first of all, there's only so many, there's only so much demand in our small little town, even with, even with tourism. But I went and did some research on different towns that are similar in nature to ours. I mean, everyone has its own character, but Mount Shasta has three dispensaries, two of them on Main Street, one of them is right off of Main Street. Ashland, Oregon has three dispensaries, two of them on Main Street, one is right off Main Street. Brookings, Oregon has two of them. One of them's directly downtown on the one oh one, one is one block off the one oh one. I looked up the quaint little fishing village of Mendocino. They have two dispensaries, one on Main Street, one directly off Main Street. Fort Bragg, they have five dispensaries in Fort Bragg. Three of them are on Main Street, two of them are one block off of Main Street. These are places that, some of them are in the Emerald Triangle, some of them are not. I think that all of these communities care for their children, as all of us do. And so what I'm hoping that we can do is push cannabis into the light and away from the darkness. And keeping it to the auxiliaries, keeping it in industrial zones, keeping it away, still gives the perception that it is something to be ashamed of. That is something that needs to be suppressed and hidden from the youth. I think it's something that we need to, we need to educate our children. I have educated my children, my neighbors. I, I had a cannabis farm. Most of my friends that have cannabis farms raise their children on cannabis farms. And these children are in our schools and they're often leaders in our schools. The children that have the most challenges in the elementary schools that I'm involved in are children that come from unemployed parents and parents that with, with that type of depression. So that being said, twenty to twenty miles apart, I just, that's just, I think that is onerous. But also, I would like to echo the, that adding medical into the ordinance, right, like licensed retailers selling adult-use and medical cannabis would be beneficial or essential. That's all I have to say at this point.
Thanks. Mr. McIntosh, Commissioner Heaton or Commissioner Barrett, do you have any comments?
If Todd doesn't have any, agree with everything Duncan has said. A couple of good points that, sorry. What Commissioner McIntosh said, I a hundred percent agree with. There were some very good points brought up tonight about Prop sixty-four grant money we're missing out on. We can also use the money for a historically underserved, underprivileged community. The revenue, the money can be used to assist with the sheriff's crisis where they're trying to retain qualified staff. The other thing about pushing it away to the fringe is, if anybody hasn't, and I did make note that out of the entire calls today, there was zero opposition. There was one lady, there was one lady who had some concerns, but either way, she was still a hundred, a hundred percent supportive, and I think that speaks volumes. As far as setting a cap, the market will set its own cap. So be it. If ten stores prosper, then that's beneficial for our community. More employees, more staff. And I a hundred percent agree with Duncan's comment about the inclusion of the medical. And I don't see any point in hiding it in the dark. It's on the Senate floor at the moment. It's legally available here in California and we should embrace it in our community.
I, I just want to clarify. I wasn't talking about hiding in the dark. I was talking about, I'm C one, C two highway commercial. That makes sense to me also. I wasn't pushing it away from those. I was pushing it away potentially from the opt-out areas. Just because they've expressed their community character. That's one of the criteria for the opt-out areas is that, you know, what's the character of the community? And if it, if it's largely residential interspersed with C one, which you can have, then, you know, there's all those letters from, you know, the Lewiston people. I've gotten letters. There's letters in the packet from Trinity Center folks who say they don't want it in the opt-out areas. So anyway, just a clarification.
So I've got a few comments. You know, I am in agreement with, with, we do need a retail storefront here. I am also in agreement that if folks have expressed that they want to be in an opt-out, that we should, we should honor that and try to fit these into places where, where there's not opt-outs. I think bringing it into the light is absolutely what needs to be done. I think anything that gets rid of the illegal industry side of this industry is a win for all. I agree that it should be a uniform thousand-foot setback. I think, you know, in, and I don't know, you know, what the answer is to get CUPs through and why it takes along. But I think leaving a storefront in ordinance that are controversial up to a director's use permit, especially when we change hands of directors constantly and they don't know the makeup of the community, they don't know the feel of what people are wanting, to just make that a stamp without public input, I think is, is a slippery slope that might get us back to where we are with, with cannabis grows in their current state. So I think, you know, CUPs should be there. I think there needs to be a way to get things through. There should not be this grind for folks to get processed. And I don't, I don't know the answer to that. That's a staff issue. But I certainly don't think it should be up to a certain director, because again, we go through directors, it seems, quite frequently. And so I don't think they have a feel for the, for the community. I'm complete agreement that we need to grab every dollar that we can get for our communities. And if there's money out there, we should get it. I did call and drive by three, the three places that I could find in Reading. None of those seem to be in high-vis areas. They all seem to be on second-tier roads in commercial areas. Certainly, I don't, I'm trying to think the. Certainly, I don't, I'm trying to think the, none of them, none of them that I went by in Reading, which is our closest retail outlet. So I'm assuming that most folks from here go to Reading. So that's their experience. None of those stores that I drove by had any residential anywhere near them and none of them were on a Main Street. I'm in agreement that there does need to be a limit on how many, if for nothing more to, to encourage sales for that, that person. I'm also in agreement that there should be some verbiage in our ordinance that does not allow big industry into our county, that we do form a brand, that we can support and stand behind. What else did I have here? I think, you know, Reading has, what was the stats on Reading? They allow 10? 10 in Reading and, and Reading has something like what 90,000, 100,000 people? We have 17 to 19,000 in Weaverville. I think, how many do we?
Trinity County, thank you.
I live in Weaverville, sorry. I'm not sure. But you know, I'm just, you know, I can only go by, I didn't do a whole lot of research other than our closest neighbor, which was Reading. Statewide, it looks like 19,000 is the average per license from the information I received. You know, cannabis is not everywhere as a retail. It's, it is a, it's, it's actually in less county or cities than it is not in. So I think we need to be careful about our ordinance and write a good ordinance. There's some things in here. You know, C1 I think is a no go. I mean, I, I can, and just by experience of the ones in Readings, I can imagine, and there was a lot of traffic at all these places when I went by, I can't imagine having that kind of traffic next to a residential parcel. It seems ripe for all the issues that we have now with grows. So I think that, that has to be removed. Consumption on premise, I, you know, I, I really appreciated all the comments tonight and, and I have compassion for those people that, that need this as a health component of their life. I think it's absolutely better than alcohol or any other thing that the doctor's going to prescribe you. What I'm concerned with is that is that are we allowing consumption onsite for the sheer fact of consumption onsite? Or are we allowing consumption onsite because of what the lady spoke to that she needs to open the package? And so some, somebody how to use that? Can there be an ordinance written that says, you know, you can open that package, show your clients how to use the product without consuming it onsite? I think one is important. The other seems like you're opening another bar and I'm pretty sure we limit the number of liquor licenses, correct?
Yeah, those are, those are capped.
Right.
County.
So, you know, why would that be any different? And why would we want more, more of that? So, and I didn't see, you know, in the three that I went by in Reading, there was nothing, and I, I don't think they mentioned that there was any consumption on those premises at all. It certainly didn't appear that way. So another one that maybe we could look at amending. Location of where they're at. I think it's critical that, that we honor, you know, as far as my district goes, what they've asked. District two has asked for opt out in the historic district. And, and in the, in the community services district, I think we should honor that. I, I don't believe that it would be impossible to maybe put it in a manufacturing zone like the nurseries. I don't think that's out of step with what, what Reading has done. Again, they're, all their stores were not on a Main Street, not in their historic district and all heavily commercial areas.
Chair, what do you think about the opt out areas being where the commercial, commercial zoning exists right now?
In, in regards to Weaverville?
Yes. How do you address that?
I, I think that we're pretty limited. We have a very small town. We have a lot of houses. We have a lot of community. You know, there are foot traffic here. We're not, we're not a big sprawling city. So we're, we're very limited on where we can appropriately put something like this that, that allows everybody a voice, allows everybody to be able to, to be, to be able to back this, honestly, you know, to be in favor of it.
If I may, you mentioned keeping out of the community service district. Is that the community service district of Weaverville?
Correct.
So doesn't that entail the entire town of Weaverville?
I don't believe, does it, I don't think, does it go all the way down to the manufacturing area?
Yeah.
Right.
So right now, the, our ordinance does allow manufacturing outside of the historic district. So the, there's no cultivation in the Weaverville Community Services District, but you can have other commercial cannabis uses as long as they're outside of the historic district.
And I think for, you know, my constituents, I know it would be an absolute that they would want that. There's, you know, I've heard from Dee Sanders at the mill.
You know, we, we want to have successful business in a C1 area. You know, we can't just stifle it because, you know, we have, we have to embrace it. And it's another, it's to point out the cap on alcohol. There's no cap on beer and wine. You go to any corner store, gas station, it's all, it's all right there. So, you know, it, I don't, I, I don't know how you would ask a C1 company to prosper here with the limitations we have on the table.
So one, one thing to think about is if you had a thousand foot setback from schools and youth oriented facilities, you know, that's, that's the elementary school, the high school, you know, the daycare on Highway three, things like that. So, so that would take out certain areas, but then the main street, you know, the straight stretch, for those of us who've lived here a long, long time. You know, that's outside of that 1,000 foot setback and it's still within the CSD, but it's, it is more, much more commercial and less residential. So I could see
It's appropriate there.
Be compatible.
Right.
Yeah.
Be palatable. Definitely not in the, the historic district, though I don't think that.
And it would be, well, the historic district, yeah, you're going to have a lot of overlap with the, if you had a thousand foot setback. Anyway, yeah.
If I may, I have reached out to numerous business owners in the historic district. People that own shoe stores, physical therapists, grocery stores, and they're all in complete support of cannabis in the historic district. And I'm not saying that I'm in, like, I want to push it in the historic district, but to say that unanimously, it does not want to be there. The Chamber of Commerce wrote a beautiful letter fully in support and not one portion of that mentioned anything about prohibition of any part of Weaverville. So it's, it's, you know, it is not as cut and dry as every, nobody wants it there.
No, I, and I'm not saying that, you know, but I have got enough feedback from people and, you know, I'm voicing this opinion because of those people that have gave me that feedback.
Well, and I'm wondering how the community would feel about it with the, if you're allowed to do the onsite consumption and the retailer chooses to allow outdoor smoking, which has to be outdoor, you know, I don't know what the businesses in, you know, downtown, you know, historic district would feel about it if like, you know, people are sitting outside on, you know, surrounded by a fence, smoking and you have that, you know, kind of thing that people complain about a lot, which is odor. It doesn't seem that compatible. So there's, there's some, I just see a lot of potential conflicts coming up here.
Yeah. And then on humoring that, I mean, in just in the downtown area, all the buildings are pretty much identical where they're narrow, long buildings. So therefore just humoring, let's say, consumption in the downtown historic area, nothing would be in the front. It would be in the back, which is 60 feet behind a brick building.
Where people park.
And where residents, and there's backs up to residences and schools.
And schools, if it's three, if it's a thousand feet, I also, I'm in, I'm in support of the regulations that the, the state lays down, which is a thousand feet for consumption and 600 feet for, for just picking up your bag and going. I would actually rather be less than that because I see the value in having consumption in that I really personally, I like to get stoned before going to cafe on me. Or getting a cup of coffee after I, you know, get baked. It's, you know, it's, it's accented my life. And so I think that it would really, it can, it could really accent business. And as long as it's done away from the children, which is a given, it's going to be completely away from the children. So I'm just to like, let the commission know that I'm not in support of a streamlined thousand foot setback.
Well, even at 600 feet, I think that pretty much the entire downtown, pretty close would be within that of the,
The school?
Not the school, but there's the, God, why am I not thinking of this? Preschool. Head start, the head start. It starts probably within 600 feet of this entire area.
The breweries further away, they had to get, they, they had to measure.
So
Something else. It speaks volumes that the lady from the Chamber of Commerce came here in full support. And the gentleman with the MBA degree in business talked about the concept of spillover shopping. That would be a wonderful bonus to the, like Chair McIntosh, Commissioner McIntosh said, you know, it, it opens your horizon or your, you go down and you sample the local foods or you go and you support the local shoe store, all the different things. The, the concept of spillover shopping is something we're, we're missing terribly.
And I, I can, I hear that, but I also look at, again, I went to Reading and nothing about their dispensaries, which were stellar, looked like state of the art facilities, were in shopping districts. They weren't in school areas. They weren't in residential areas. There was nothing about that.
Commissioner Sharp, you, you mentioned that you only looked in Reading. Like, like I mentioned, like if you go to Arcata, you go to Blue Lake, you go to McKinleyville, you go to Fortuna, the city of Samoa, Mendocino, Mount Shasta, Ashlands, right? There's so many other different, there's more investigation that you could do to, to see these different ways that they have integrated into our communities. Reading and Weaverville are about as full opposite of communities as you can compare. It's, it's really apples to oranges.
You know, and, and they're usually decorated very discreetly. They're integrating into the community. Someone brought up earlier a cigar smoking club. There's actually one right off California Street there in Reading. And everyone gathers and it's a social event and they, you know, they, they do their thing, but they're not neon signs and pumping music. They're, they're usually very discreet and unconscious that they are integrating into a community.
So, so would that mean if there was consumption allowed that, that it would be inside? Cause that is not legal, right?
I don't know how they establish the clubs.
Right.
Whatever the state of California allows, if there's filtration, the ordinance states is whatever the state of California allows is what the county will proceed with. You know, we, we have, there's an event at LeFong Park, fundraiser for the farmer's market coming up and the brewery will be selling beer. And there will be children running around and adults responsibly consuming alcohol. Right? And there will probably be adults responsibly consuming cannabis as well. And it's something that our children need to look at our parents as examples of how to responsibly utilize these substances. And so it's, again, I'm not looking to keep it away from our children. I'm looking to keep it responsible.
Sure.
So can I, oh, so the local thing is something that really gets me. Some of you know me when I used to work for the Farm Advisor's Office and my big thing was promoting small farms in Trinity County. It's another one of my passions. And so I am worried that some big out of county, you know, company can come in, you know, the Budweiser of cannabis and, and, you know, do marketing, have a retail storefront. And I'm wondering if one of the things we should look at is something like the ordinance that Napa has, where 70% of the wine that's sold in a facility in Napa County has to be from Napa. And so you guys know better than I would, but I was thinking that we should have some sort of criteria that we should develop that, that a certain minimum percent of the products sold in that retail facility would be grown or processed in Trinity County. So anyway, that, that's just something.
Like the, like champagne or something? It's from a certain area?
Right. I mean, in the state labeling and Heidi asked about the labeling and, and whatever criteria the state ordinance, uh, the state law. You can't call something Trinity, whatever, unless it's a hundred percent Trinity County. I don't know that we enforce that. But we, we need to keep that money in the county.
I agree.
There's a way, right? And in Arcata, there is a prohibition on franchise, franchises in, in the city of Arcata. And so there is a way of doing that. If it's, if it's legal, I'm in support of it. However, there is a really nice lady who spoke at many meetings from Arcata that has a family member in Reading that would like to open up a dispensary. She had Pacific Paradise. So, so there's, it should be mindful when we, when we, you know, cut out certain demographics.
Well, are we, are we cutting it out or are we capitalizing on our, our local market? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not looking to exclude people, but certainly would want to promote the local wares.
Right. It wouldn't have to be a hundred percent Trinity, but you could, you could set some criteria that makes sure that a bunch of it comes from Trinity County.
You know, I honestly think Trinity has its own brand and, and the more that we try to capitalize on that, the more it can support itself. I mean, that seems like a, a good way forward for all producers is to brand themselves, make themselves exclusive.
So maybe, maybe I'll, I'll take a stab at a motion.
Well, I wanted to talk, you know, real briefly, because there was a lot of comment that was sent to me on how this was released and the lack of time for public comment. Especially due to the fact that this was supposed to be heard three weeks ago or released three weeks ago, heard two weeks ago, and that it came out six days ago and not a whole lot of people had a chance to respond. And, and I, I just needed to put that out there for staff and us and, you know, really let those voices be heard because there was, this seemed a little weird that we were going to have a meeting two weeks ago on this and that it didn't come out until Friday.
Chair Sharp, I would like to address that. So staff, myself, was not given a substantial amount of time to even review this ordinance or do any research on this ordinance. I was given a directive to put it on the agenda for the, was it March 24th meeting? So of course there is a legal notice time that comes out before that, which everyone was made aware of and the request was to change that meeting to April 7th. Here we are. So in order to, basically what we were given was an ordinance that was presented two years ago. There were virtually no changes to it. There was virtually no updated staff report. There was no resolution. There was nothing provided for staff. All of the things, the elements that are necessary to bring something forward to the commission, we had to put together in-house with very little time. So that's how we are where we are today.
Thank you for your candor. I appreciate that.
So Chairman Sharp, so I, I'm concerned about all the, the questions that I still have that never really got answered, like, you know, where exactly? Like, you know, where exactly, how many C one, H C zones are in the scenic overlay? I mean, and does the scenic overlay include, you know, certain areas? I, I don't know that. We don't have a, a cannabis storefront retail operating standard, which I think is gonna be, you know, answer a lot of people's questions about how these are, are operated. So I, I just, you know, there's no criteria if we want to specify, you know, Trinity grown stuff. There's the, um, problem where we also need to specify that we're gonna delete, uh, you know, uh, this code seventeen forty one, which is the one that prohibits dispensaries. So, um, I move that we, um, continue the retail storefront ordinance to address the following issues, um, retail in opt-out areas, conditional use permits, a thousand foot setback, the need to delete seventeen forty one, the, uh, criteria for promoting local source and, um, to redefine storefront retail and the definitions to include medical.
I'll second that motion. Should we have a vote?
Discussion or a competing motion before we vote? I'll humor some discussion before I make a competing motion. I heed your concerns on, on most of these issues. However, I think that those could be, um, developed as recommendations to the supervisors. Ultimately, they are the ones who write and, um, execute this ordinance. And so, I think that these, in the, in the, the light of time, my understanding is that there is cannabis monies from the state that need to come that we, as the county cannot receive until, um, we have a brick and mortar ordinance and we've already lost a million dollars from not having it last year. And so I think that there, there is an urgency to, to push an ordinance through or, or give recommendations of this ordinance. And give the recommendations to the board of supervisors so that they can continue this discussion.
I would agree with that. We have people here who, who are desperately trying to get this on the, on the agenda to be discussed. Ultimately, we're not gonna make that decision. We're just gonna provide guidance to the board of supervisors who are going to make that decision. But from what we've heard tonight, from both public comment and the concerns we are going to bring to the board of supervisors that we are highlighting with our discussions, I think it's important to, uh, move ahead.
So you're seconding the motion?
He didn't make one.
Competing motion. I got you.
I was just, I was just discussing your motion.
Making a substitute motion?
Um, I will. I haven't, I have not yet. We're, we're discussing your motion and then you, I just wanna hear what the.
Commissioner Heaton, are you online there and do you have anything to add to this?
No, it's like, yeah, I am here. Y'all haven't been able to tell, but I've been, I've been napping. But what it is, it's, uh, I, I agree with everything that's been said. It's like everything has been covered so well in, um, and I was, and I was gonna interrupt one thing and I wanna share one thought that I have. It's the, um, the amount of like the caps on the dispensaries. Uh, I hear, I don't know. It's like, I know that you can get pharmaceuticals here in Southern Trinity at the clinic. You can get it and it's like, and then you got the, the, I think it's a CVS there in Weaverville. And there used to be one and, um, and you can also get things at the, the deal. I, I must confess, I am, um, I am not into pharmaceuticals and I know that, uh, so many times the, the, um, cannabis is so much better than a pharmaceutical because it's like there's the side effects. You don't get oily discharge and everything. So many of the, the side effects are so much worse. But, uh, but the thing is, it was like, um, I, I kind of agree with Roar with, uh, Mr. Barrett there, that, uh, that it's like, I think that we, it will, the, the need will balance itself out of what the, the, the need, what we can support will balance itself out. And, uh, and I think that we do need to, um, work to get this thing going. So that like the thing's said is that we can get that money and I'd like to see a bunch of that money going towards the, um, the sheriff's department so that we can come down on a bunch of the illegal cannabis and everything else. Because it's like, it's, it's so rampant in the communities and anything we can do to help our sheriff's department. And the reason I say that, it's like Southern Trinity is the only part of the county that doesn't have a deputy sheriff. We haven't had a deputy sheriff for years. And every time we get one, they, they move them off to Weaverville. And so it's like, it's like, if we could do something to get some law enforcement besides our, uh, local, uh, L E O from the Forest Service over here on our side of the mountain. It's like, if there'd be extra funding for that and this could go help for it. It's like, I am a huge fan of that. And so, um, those are a few of the thoughts that I have. But it's like, I, I do think that this would be something because it seems like, and I don't wanna throw the, the staff under the bus or whatever. But everything that I hear when it comes to cannabis, whether it's for the licensing and people pay all their permits or pay, pay all the fees for their permits and everything else. And it's like, they pay everything and they go and it's wait. We, every, everything is about pay and wait, pay and wait, pay and wait. And we never accomplish anything. And I think we need to get in there and it's like, get this thing going as quick as we can. And it's like, and not just in dispensary, but in other things. It's like, it's wrong where we make someone pay and make them wait and make them pay and wait and make them pay and wait. It's like, that's, that's just not just, that's not right. And it's like, we need to get the ball rolling. It's like, if, if we're gonna have this going, it needs to be in a timely fashion instead of, uh, when people are ready to die of old age before they get it done. And so, so anyhow, that, that's kind of where I see, and it was like, but I am in agreement that we do need to have the, uh, with, with what the state regulates or whatever. It's like, we need to, uh, we, I don't, I don't think we should override, try to override state, state regulations or any of that nature. But it was like, but we need to step forward and I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, pushing this thing through to the supervisors to get this ball rolling.
So, um, so Todd, I just wanted to say I, I did give up on the caps. So that wasn't part of my suggestion that we consider that anymore. I, I get that the market, you know, can drive that. But the way I'm, I'm looking at it is our options are to, um, send this kind of half-baked, uh, ordinance, which doesn't address things like wanting to have local uh, sourcing or, and it doesn't address things like the conflict with seventeen forty one. It doesn't fix the definition on, uh, storefront retail. And so do we send it like it is or do we try to, you know, come back and, and fix those things and send something that looks, you know, like we planned it to the, to supervisors, you know? I'm, I'm willing to, you know, meet whenever in order to do that.
And so am I. And I think, you know, by staff's own admission that this has been rushed and pushed and it, and it doesn't need to be. And I think it's something that we could bring back. Please hold your comments down and respect the chair, please. I think, I think, you know, this could be heard at our next meeting. We're gonna meet in a week, right? Is that our next meeting?
I, I would advise against that. And the reasons why, this is the seventh of April. On the eighth of April, we will be putting together packets for the fourteenth, which means that we would have to literally stay up overnight, make all the corrections to the ordinance. And, you know, take care of all of the suggestions that you're doing to get these packets in the mail tomorrow. To make that happen. It's just, I mean, everybody talks about what staff can and can't get done. It is requests of that nature that make it very difficult for us to provide you with a credible, reliable uh, document to review. So I would suggest that the most, the closest would be the twenty eighth, which is already a scheduled meeting, uh, would be reasonable.
Commissioner McIntosh?
I have faith that the, the board of supervisors, um, can do basic cleanups like deleting, um, number four, seventeen forty one, which is prohibits dispensaries that we're legalizing, um, as well as and, and even including medical cannabis, right? Like that is something that seems, especially after listening to, um, the community, that's, that's almost a given, right? And so there is, there is certain aspects of the ordinance, the cleanup that we don't necessarily need to do at a respective time. And so at this point, I will present a competing motion. If I may?
Continue.
So, um, let's see, um, I motion that, let's see. Let's see, how do I, how do I word this? Well, I guess I'll, I'll motion that, um, the Trinity County Planning Commission finds this project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act by the Common Nonsense Exemption fifteen zero sixty one, which applies only to projects where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, uh, be, adopt the findings, um, listed in Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three and, um, um, recommend that the board of supervisors induce, waive the reading of and adopt the text amendment of the zoning ordinance of the, the county of Trinity to include section seventeen point four three H dash cannabis storefront retail ordinance identified as zoning amendment D E V dash twenty dash zero two.
I'll second it. Am I allowed to ask a point to clarify? So you're basically, uh, Commissioner McIntosh, you're basically, uh, to approve the motion as presented. We're going to address or give our advice to the board supervisors to clean it up with the understanding they'll also make the amendment, uh, for the medical.
That would be, need to be included in the motion.
Right.
Yeah, there are some points of clarity. Um, but I think what I, what I would, in my motion, I am, I am surrendering the cleanup to the board of supervisors.
Okay. So I'll, I'll second it.
Not gonna provide any, um, guidance or feedback to the, um, board of supervisors on whether or not we should include opt-out areas or whether or not we should have, um, a conditional use permit or whether or not we should, um, come up with criteria for local sourcing. So we're not gonna have any recommendations on those.
It's the purpose of tonight.
Well, it also helps speed the process along for these poor people that have been trying to get this on the agenda and that money that we're missing out on.
I think it's more important that we get it right.
Chair Sharp, if, if I may make a suggestion, um, we've been keeping a list of the recommendations as you've been discussing. So what you could do is make a motion, um, like Duncan has presented, which is basically what staff had recommended. You could make that motion and request your recommendations to be included for the board to review. So if you would like, we can do that a couple of different ways. We can go through the list of what we have written down as recommendations um, and do a poll and see who's in favor of which of those recommendations to move forward. And then we can, you know, get a motion to, you know, as Duncan did, with the recommendations as approved by the planning commission. So that's one way you could do it.
I think that's a great idea. Are we in agreement on that, commissioners?
I agree.
Beautiful.
Can you? If I may?
Yes.
Director Connell, I'm gonna start with what I feel like is probably the most concise. So point number one would be to maintain opt-outs of cannabis industry in the established opt-out areas. And I'm looking for consensus here.
Let me, for a point of clarity, should we vote on the motion and then talk, because?
We're gonna take a straw poll on what.
Each one of those before we address the motion?
For a straw poll, uh, to maintain the opt-outs of the existing opt-out areas. So it would be limiting the ability for those to go into those areas.
Okay. All in favor of including that into the recommendation?
No.
I, I would agree, but with the board of supervisors having the ability to discuss the Weaverville Community Services District in more detail. Cause that is the inconsistent one.
Well, and some of the opt-outs are because of lack of water, right? And so a, a lack of water, why would you prohibit a retail shop?
I'm pretty sure that the historic district wasn't knocked out because of lack of water.
Well, well, when there's a blanket, all opt-out zones, then there's this assumption that all of them will be opted out and there's supposed to be sound land use and some of them are because of concentrations of populations or lack of water or other, there's, there's many factors that could come into play for that. So by just making this blanket where there's an opt-out, there should be no cannabis retail.
We're not, and so understand that we're not, you know, we're just asking the, the board of supervisors to look at these recommendations. We're not saying that there, it's gonna happen, but at least the voices are heard.
Right. And I'm just voicing that, um, you know, like the opposite, other side of that before we have a straw poll about wanting to give recommendations to opt-out, all opt-outs from retail.
So if I could make just one more suggestion, um, because Commissioner Heaton is not with us here today. If we could just do a roll call vote to make sure that we have that correct.
Gotcha. Okay. So on the first recommendation to send to the board of supervisors.
If I may, I like, I like the possibility of being able to, but to consider. I'm open to considering an opt-out, but I.
I think that's what we're talking about.
But what, what I've heard is that i- in opt-out zones, retail will be prohibited as well. And that is very different than being able to exercise the ability to exercise an opt-out zone.
And, and that's what I took from director's comments also, that opt-out was opt-out. And I, I'm with you. Is that it?
Can you reread what?
Yeah. So I can make that, that change. This is based on the conversation that you guys have had. So I'm trying to capture it as quickly as possible. So I would, I would consider the extension of the established opt-outs to be incorporated into the new ordinance. Is that what I'm hearing from, from the?
I'm, I thought that essentially we're asking the board of supervisors to consider whether or not opt-out areas, all or none of them should be included in the, uh, prohibition for retail. So it may vary.
Correct.
Opt-out area to opt-out area.
And I believe that's what we can capture when we present it to the board of supervisors, that it will be based on, you know, their ultimate decision. But what the recommendation from the planning commission is, is to take into account the established opt-out areas in the county and how retail under this ordinance will fit into those opt-out areas. Am I capturing that correctly?
Thank you, Director Connell.
It's perfect. So let's go ahead and take a roll call on that.
Commissioner Fall?
Yes.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
Commissioner Heaton?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrett?
Aye.
Thank you.
So next one.
F is the thousand foot setback in general from schools and youth oriented facilities.
For all, for all product, for all cannabis related.
No, just for retail storefront.
Retail storefronts.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do a roll call on that.
Um, you know, I would like to do, to have a discussion. There was people that voiced their concern. I don't feel like I, I had an opportunity to give the other side of my concern, if you wouldn't mind.
No, go ahead.
Yeah. So, um, six hundred feet is, you know, that's, what is that, two football fields away from, um, a brick and mortar business that takes, uh, that has, there is a security guard in front checking IDs, and then there is no advertising that's allowed within 1,000 feet already. So I think 1,000 feet for a brick-and-mortar just being able to retail, expanding that is onerous. I don't think that is, is needed. We already have a small enough population base or geographic area where the retail can occur. I don't think that another 400 feet is going to have the effect of protecting children from something that they're already protected from.
I, I would disagree. I mean, it seems like other level heads, and I E. Reading has thousand-foot setbacks, the state has a thousand-foot setbacks, and other things.
Reading is apples and oranges.
Well, I get it, I get it. But we're, you know, we're treading in new water and, and these seem to work there. So again.
New there.
Yep.
Capture the fact that the commission did not come to consensus on these items and that we are making these recommendations for the board to ultimately make the hard decision on what goes into the ordinance. And so I feel capable to capture the fact that not, that this commission hasn't come to consensus, and that might drive the board discussion.
Perfect.
I was just, well, A, like I said, I'm trying to protect youth, but I'm also trying to make it easier on the staff and everybody in terms of, they already have to be 1,000 foot away from a school and a youth-oriented facility to have a, a marketing or advertising assigned. They already have to be 1,000 feet away if they're going to have outdoor consumption. So it just seems like, it just makes sense. Anyway, that's-
That seems pretty logical. I mean, if I'm going to have a storefront and I'm going to advertise, if I'm within 600 feet, how do I advertise?
Well, it's on social media and on magazines.
I get it.
Businesses, I mean, not all businesses are like Sharp Electric with the big, you know, Kent flags and such. I mean, there's many discreet, small businesses, right? And I, I have been to dispensaries and Reading, but I've also, like I've said, been to them in Blue Lake and McKinleyville and such. And they do not, they're not outwardly advertising because the people who know, know. The state has gone through tremendous amounts of vetting to come up with 1,000 and 600-foot setbacks. So, you know, I, I think it's just more work to actually put more regulations on top of the regulations that are there.
So it's a thousand-foot setback if you have non-storefront retail, right now. It's just, yeah, I'm just trying to fix one way or another. Anyway, so your consensus would be maybe that we're, we don't have a consensus.
Or maybe we, or maybe we do a straw poll.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't you read us what you think we've said?
So what I've captured is that the thousand-foot setback, the recommendation from Planning Commission, which seems to not quite be consensus of the commission, is that 1,000-foot setbacks for retail store locations versus the 600-foot setback for store locations. The 1,000-foot applies currently, from what I'm gathering from the commission, is in our existing ordinance as well as will apply to consumption-based, onsite consumption retailers. And the 600-foot setback would not be required if they were just a storefront retailer. And I'm, and I'm gathering that this is not agreed upon by the commission, and I will make that reflection to the board when we present.
Like, I think the, the 1,000-foot setback in Hayfork in particular would be extremely problematic. You would, so I, I would think the storefront, 600 feet, no more, because Hayfork, you're basically saying they're excluding from everything because of schools and the way the town is and everything's laid out. So you're basically with a thousand-foot setback saying Hayfork is ineligible.
Well, maybe that would be something to do before the meeting because I try, I went on Google Earth and looked at the school and went 1,000 feet. And, you know, Wiley's and all that, from there, further northeast is, is commercial. Yeah, the high school, but, yeah.
You'd have to measure.
There's an area in between.
So I think that captures it. Let's go ahead and do a roll call.
I'm sorry, for clarity, a roll call for what?
The 1,000-foot.
Just for the, a roll call to increase it to 1,000 feet?
No.
Yeah.
Correct. Well, what I've captured is that there was the discussion between 600-foot requirement if there is no onsite consumption. The 1,000-foot setback is required if there is onsite consumption. What we're trying to do is find out if it's 1,000 foot across the board, regardless of whether you're doing onsite consumption, or if it's 600 feet and 1,000, which is the state law requirement. What I'm gathering is that there is no consensus from this commission on this item. And when I bring this to the board, it will be ultimately their decision on how they want to implement it into our ordinance.
Well, the consensus hasn't been established because it hasn't been voted upon yet.
Correct, Commissioner.
Right, so let's go ahead and do a straw, straw poll on-
So, so-
Either keeping, keeping it with the state regulations or increasing it.
Duncan, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but what, I think what we agreed on when we went down this road is that we don't have a consensus, so we're not going to do a straw poll on any of these items. And all of these items will be a recommendation. And we'll, not a recommendation, but an advice.
Sharp, so what I'm trying to do here is I'm trying to synthesize the conversation that has happened since the beginning of this meeting. I have taken all of the conversation of recommendations, and I've written them down. And what I'm doing right now is trying to find out, what does this commission agree on and what do you not agree on? Because I'm going to present all of your recommendations to the board. That's why I've taken the time to write these down, because I want to capture the intent of this planning commission and the people that you represent to the Board of Supervisors to ultimately make that hard decision. And so the conversation that we're having right now is about the 1,000-foot setbacks. If that will be across the board for all retail licenses or if we will mirror state law, which is 1,000 foot for onsite consumption, 600 feet if it's not onsite consumption. And I believe that would be where we're talking about going into the polling to find out if this is consensus of the commission or if it is split.
So should we start with, start with one and then move to the other? Because there's two competing motions there. So straw poll on keeping the setbacks in alignment with the state? Should we, should we do a straw poll for that?
Yep, let's go ahead and do a straw poll.
Okay. So for clarity, the straw poll, the vote is to keep the setbacks from retail in accordance with the state regulations.
So, so the first straw poll we'll do is, is to keep the state recommended, recommended setbacks of 600 and 1,000. The second straw poll we'll do is to make everything 1,000 when there's consumption.
I think that one, we only need one because that will be-
The one that declares it, yeah, right. Okay, so the first one, let's do a straw poll for 600 and 1,000. So all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I was waiting for someone else. Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No.
No. There you go. Okay, so the next item.
The next recommendation that I have is that the process will be through a conditional use permit heard by the planning commission.
Discussion?
I, I, I'm going to stand on, you know, what I said before. I think a conditional use permit is a necessity just by the amount of turnover we have at staff level. I don't think a director's use permit is the proper way to go about this. I don't think it gives enough oversight or time for the community to respond where these things are being put.
I, I've been invited to go and, to go and tour a one-acre license in Solier next week for a CUP that has been waiting for, I think the number is six years.
But for what, for cultivation?
For cultivation. And, and so it's, it's, CUPs take a lot of oversight and a burden on our staff. And this is, we're talking a brick-and-mortar retail facility that is regulated with this thick of regulations where higher regulation than a bar, than a liquor store, than a gas station that can sell anything. I, I, I don't think a CUP, I think a CUP would be onerous and it would exclude retail from our community for possibly up to another decade with the backlog of our licenses or CUPs. And so I, I, I think that's onerous. I do not agree.
So I, I don't think comparing a cultivation conditional use permit to the retail is going to be the same.
Or a lot, or a lot split, or a lot line adjustment, or any CUP. It's, it's not about what CUP, it's that the backlog of CUPs is a mile long.
So, so if you, if you look at how the other communities decided where to have retail, they don't all have director's use permits. A lot of them require a request for a proposal, and that's reviewed by the staff. You know, it's, it's not a, a simple ministerial decision. It's totally discretionary. So for us to say that this is just going to be, you do X, Y, Z, you get your permit, there's no public comment options really, there's no ability for the community to say this, this isn't part of the community character or whatever, because maybe you didn't agree to have opt-outs. I mean, you just have taken everything away from the public as far as them being able to provide some input. And you've not really, I don't think our findings, like I say, justify, that it's clear-cut that it's perfectly okay to have, you know, whatever, 50 retail facilities, you know, scattered throughout every C1, C2, HC in the county. I mean, that could be the option, and I just want to have more oversight.
Do you really see 50?
No, that's an, that's a, that's an exaggeration. But it, it's a possibility if you haven't, you haven't, so we, we're not going to put a cap. We may or may not have opt-out areas. You're saying we don't have a setback? So what is there that really lets people say, this, this particular one is not the best place?
To say that there is no setback is, is incorrect because there is a 1,000-foot setback and a 600-foot setback. You know, I mean, there, there are setbacks. And in the historic districts, there are, the, there is the architectural committees that come together to talk about the cultural character of that particular area. It's spelt out that they have a say on, on the type of retail.
But that's only Lewiston and Weaverville.
So in all the rest of the communities where there's C1, C2, and highway commercial, if it's more than 600 feet or, you know, less than 600 feet from a youth-oriented facility, then it can't happen. Outside of that, I mean, I, again, I guess I am just not looking at it like it's something that should be ashamed of. You know, like, it's not a cannabis farm where people don't like the semi-trucks going in. People don't like the greenhouses and the fans and the crazy amount of smells of an acre of cannabis in their, in their community. This is not that. This is a brick-and-mortar, sometimes the building might be 300 square feet. All the jars are, have to go through a distributor before coming. So no one's bringing pounds in there, opening up pounds, breaking them all up so that their smell. These are already put in single-serving containers.
I've, I've got a question for Steph. If I was going to open a bar, do I have to get a director's use permit or do I go through a CUP?
Your biggest obstacle would be through the state to get your liquor license.
But if, let's say I did, now I understand that. But let's say I did, I obtained a liquor license. I have a liquor license. If I wanted to do a bar here in Trinity County, is that-
I think that would be a retail use.
And so it would-
Yeah, it's, I mean, C1 allows a bar. You have to have a use permit to have, I was just reading it. It's not automatic. It's not a director's use permit. In, in C1. It is in C2.
If we have that same level of condition for a bar, wouldn't, wouldn't that kind of be on the same plane as a storefront cannabis? And I'm just throwing this out there, I don't know. I'm just trying to find some middle ground here.
If you're talking consumption, possibly.
Well, we are.
But if we're talking, well, if we're also, if we're talking just actually retail, then a gas station can sell tobacco and alcohol.
Correct.
Right? And, and, and so I, the, the regulations from the state are extensive. The regulations, the, the parameters of where it can be within our, in our town, 1,000 feet and 600 feet is going to extremely minimize the locate, volume of locations. I think it's already kind of pigeonholed enough. And if they can fit within those parameters of 600 feet and 1,000 feet, if there's a neighbor that lives 400 feet away, that lives, that lives in a residential neighborhood three blocks away, I, I, you know, like, their, their concern is, I mean, they don't own that property. It's, it's not, it doesn't smell. It's not bringing riffraff unless you think cannabis consumers are riffraff. I mean, this is, this is a legal business where they're making a legal transaction that is more highly regulated than any other retail product on the face of this earth.
The, the other problem is if we look historically at, at the timeline, like the farm you mentioned in Solier, I think it's either four or five years. So if we look at how long it has historically taken to process CUPs to say this blanket statement, or we're going to do it differently because of a brick-and-mortar retail store, we, we can't. We can't afford to make these people wait four or five years. You're talking about perhaps 64, a million dollars a year, $4 million just in lost benefits from the state, let alone tax revenue and spillover business. So I, I think it's completely wrong to put a CUP on, on, on these people.
So I just want to point out that the non-cannabis comments, the non-medical ones that we got, all said that they wanted it to be a conditional use permit. If you read the comments that we got, you know, the, the public that doesn't sell medical marijuana that, that isn't in the cannabis industry, they asked for a conditional use permit.
We do have to consider all sides, not just one side.
Well said, well said.
All sides.
Here we have a spectrum of, of the community. And so I'm just, like, like Todd has mentioned, it's, it's about doing what's just, right? And so like, a brick-and-mortar business in a commercial zoning that's 600 feet from a youth facility, which is probably only 5% of the commercial real, um, real estate in Weaverville, is likely going to be okay. Right? So like, a, a CUP to have a, a vetting so that all these people who have never stepped foot in a cannabis dispensary before, who think that cannabis is not good, can, can voice their concerns about having something that they don't believe in in their community. And it's something that is legal. It is here, it is part of our culture.
We get it, we get it.
Like, yeah, I mean, right?
Okay. Have, Steph, have you guys found anything on this? I know you've been over there looking hard.
So if you're curious about a bar, it requires a use permit in a C1. It does not require a use permit in a C2. It is not mentioned in HC, but HC does allow you to have a restaurant as a permitted use. And I don't know of very many places that are going to question alcohol sales in a restaurant.
Good, thank you for that.
Maybe we should just put it to a straw poll and keep on moving, trucking forward.
Okay. So we'll do a straw poll now, all in favor of adding CUPs as a recommendation to the board?
If I may, can we do it by name so that way we can make sure we capture supervisor, or Commissioner Heaton's voice in this as well? He's not present.
Okay, so yeah, let's do a roll call.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
No.
Commissioner Heaton?
Call me at the end.
Man, come on, man, you're on the hot seat.
You're on the hot seat, come on.
Please respond, Commissioner Heaton.
I'd say no.
Yes.
Commissioner McIntosh?
No.
Commissioner Fall? Yes.
Okay, I'm going to ask the audience, please, one more time to hold the clap, please. I know you're passionate about it. I feel it. I get it. But we really need to maintain some courtesy. So I just ask, please, hold it.
Three for no and two for yes.
Uh, the next point is to streamline the process. That that's what the discussion between the commissioners were, was how to streamline this process and to make sure that it is not bogging down the wheels of motion forward. Um, and so that's how I've captured it as to streamline the process, which sounds like that would be the recommendation to the board. Find ways to streamline the process.
Yep.
It it seems like staff is working diligently um and as hard as it can with the capabilities and the staff that they have to um have this as efficient as possible. I don't know if a statement like streamlining the process um is really needed.
It is not. I think that's everything that we're talking about here.
Do you want to strike that from the list?
We do.
So the next one that I have is, uh, the way I wrote it was to keep it off of the major collectors, which would be our primary thorough streets.
No, I if we're if we're if we're going for C one, C two, highway commercial, then those are all pretty much by definition in the zoning code along the main streets. So I think we're saying it's okay to be along the main streets.
Yeah, I mean, in my district, um, or in District Four, there that's Highway thirty six, that's Highway two ninety nine, Big Bar, Big Flat, Mad River. All that is highway commercial, so they might want to have a dispensary next to the Burger Barn in Mad River. So um
Yeah, I don't
I don't think that needs to be included.
Stricken that one. So the next one that I have is to limit the number of retail licenses in the county.
I give up on that.
I'm again, I just want to make sure I make this clear, Chair. I am trying to capture the conversation that happened between the five commissioners here. I'm I've written them down, and that's why I'm bringing them back to you, is to find out if this is consensus or if this is not. I'm not trying to insult anybody. I'm not trying to misplace anything. I'm just trying to capture what the recommendations will be from this commission to the board as I present it to them.
Yeah, I apologize for being facetious. It just, I'm getting tired.
And and
We all are.
And you're actually, you're doing a really good job. So thank you for keeping keeping track of this.
It's almost like having a consultant.
So um could you, could you, okay, so it was capping. So do you have anything to add about capping the number of dispensaries?
You know, I I don't, other than, you know, I hope that we're trying to glean off of other folks that have already done this. And then we're looking at how Arcata has done at Eureka, all the places. So we're not reinventing a wheel that's been rolling.
Yeah, so I I don't think
We don't need that, yeah.
No caps.
No cap. It's needed.
The next one that I have is to restrict large industry influence in the retail licensure.
Or to develop criteria that promote local sources.
I have that captured later.
I think so. The same thing.
So it was communicated, um, there was some corporate dispensaries concerned with corporate dispensaries coming in and capturing that market share. And so do we want to have some type of recommendations on encouraging residency? Or
Can't really do that.
And so is is there
I would say, you know, maybe we should make a recommendation that we have ninety percent local product and ten percent.
So I I don't know that we want to be specific, um, because it would depend, you know, like, until we get our own manufacturing going. You know, we don't necessarily have some of the products that we'd want to sell. So right now, you know, maybe we're we're great on dried flour and tinctures and oils and stuff like that, but we don't have the fancy gummies and stuff yet. So I I think my recommendation, my, what I understood was that we we work on developing some sort of criteria that would promote as much as possible, you know, the the local locally grown stuff, locally grown and processed.
I fully agree.
I agree as well. Todd?
I agree. Yep, I agree.
Excellent.
So I'm going to remove the restrict large industry. And and what I did, what I meant by what I captured later was to develop a local first strategy for local producers. Is that what we're capturing here?
I like that. Yeah, thank you.
Perfect. Um, and the last one that I have is to remove the seventeen point four one medical medical dispensaries prohibition.
Yeah, I think leak, yeah.
Yep.
It won't work if if
Yeah.
dispensaries are prohibited.
And and would it be the um the pleasure of the commission to add in the um findings and definitions, um, possibly um striking the word recreation and adding and or medical cannabis? Oh, oh, you said that was your last one was the last one. So I'm sorry.
That is, that's the next one, is to uh adjust the definition language to remove adult use and to add medical to the term. So it would read as
I think I think you keep adult, but it's recreational that goes away. You got it?
A hundred percent right there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, I think with that, we have covered everything on item one. Are we in agreement?
Yeah, so we have that motion on the table and a competing motion. So should we
First?
Pick up the substitute? So should I read that substitute again? Or it's pretty much, it's the recommendations from the commission, so um
And just just so it's on the record, um, maybe it should say those recommendations with what we've given the cannabis director.
Okay. Um with the recommendations um of that the commission has provided for staff, the planning commission recommends the Trinity County Board of Supervisors makes the following findings. The Trinity County Board of Supervisors finds the project exempt from California Environmental Quality Act by the common sense exception fifteen zero six one B three, which applies only to projects where it can be seen with clarity that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. B, adopt the recommended findings listed in Resolution twenty twenty two dash zero three. And C, recommend the Trinity County Board of Supervisors endure induce waive the reading of and adopt the text amendment of the zoning ordinance of the county of Trinity to include section seventeen dot four three H dash cannabis storefront retail ordinance identified as Zone Amendment D E V dash twenty dash zero two.
Include the consensus.
I I mentioned at the beginning, right? Yeah.
I'll second.
Include those recommendations.
I'll second it.
Okay, right. So that was that was motioned and seconded, so.
We have a second. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
Aye to Commissioner McIntosh's proposal.
Commissioner McIntosh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Heaton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Sharp, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you. Three, two. Competing motion.
Okay, um, do we have any staff report?
No.
There's no staff report. Um, do we have any planning commissioner reports?
Yeah, I have one. Oh, I'm sorry. Were you first? Go ahead.
So I I am a representative of the Planning Commission Association of California. I'm I'm the northern rep. And um I want wanted to invite my fellow commissioners to the two thousand twenty three state California State Planning Commissioners Association Conference, which will be in Pleasanton, California, will be, um, it'll be at the Hilton in Pleasanton. We'll be taking um tours of wineries, uh gravel plants, and hetch hatchy water system that supplies San Francisco. So it's going to be a good time. Um, I I was tasked with calling planners uh from five of the northern regions to encourage them all to go. The more participation, the better. So
I'm going on that.
Um I will have dates at the next one. It's in the month. I believe it's the second week of October.
Good. I'll be there. Can Steph um make sure that we're in conjunction with Duncan on getting that arranged? And so we have funds for that.
Yeah, as soon as I have the information um that is in concrete, I will let staff know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Commissioner McIntosh.
I have one. One of the constituencies, or one of my constituents in Hayfork approached me with a concern. Um, apparently, I'm I'm going off his information, so if it's inaccurate, I apologize. He's one of only four people who are eligible to renew his license at this time. Nothing has changed. His CUP has remained the same. What he's saying is is that his CUP has been misplaced and he has provided an alternative copy. But as it sits, he is uh going out of compliance. One, because the lady who handles it, I think, has been on vacation, but through other staffing issues. And he had asked, is there any way to assist or guide him in the process or what he needs to do?
Would you like to address that?
If I may, through the chair, Director Connell, um with the limited information that is presented here, what I would tell you to tell your constituent is to get a email me directly with his questions and let me do the hard research on where it is and find out what the history on that is, what's happened. If it's for a renewal and it's in the, it's an issued CUP, it would be a DUP for renewals, which means it would be signed by me. So I feel like I can figure out where it is, what the issues are, and and get a pathway forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, just a tale on that, where are we at with processing licenses? How many currently have been processed?
Chair, to be completely honest with you, I cannot even answer that question.
Really? Okay.
Are the inspections, um, are there inspections occurring?
Through the chair, Director Connell? Absolutely, yes. I've had twenty seven inspections completed in this county in the last week with one employee. I want to make sure that that's evident, with one employee.
Good. Right on. Keep up the good work.
Trying.
We appreciate you. It's good to have you on board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm glad to be here.
There's nothing further from the board or the commission?
I just, I had just a question. So do we have a a schedule for for meetings? Are we going to assume two meetings a month or?
I would assume two meetings a month through June. I'm working on a schedule and as soon as I can stop making changes to it, it will be a lot easier to communicate that information to you.
Okay, we'll see you next week and I'll probably have the same question. Thanks. Thanks a lot, you guys.
Thank you. With that, this meeting is adjourned.